Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson, city manager Isaiah Hughley, Pops Barnes, District One, Glenn Davis, District Two, Bruce Huff, District Three, Toya Tucker, District Four, Charmaine Crabbe, District Five, Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tem and District Six,
Joanne Kogle, District Seven,
Walker Garrett, District Eight, Judy Thomas, Post Nine at Large Counselor,
Tyson Begley, Post Ten at Large Counselor,
Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council, and City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
June 13th council meeting. We will be conducting business in the city, but before we do, we want to start by asking God's presence in this facility. And I would like to call to the mic my friend Pastor Ralph Hewling from St. James Missionary Baptist Church. Pastor Hewling, would you please, sir? Chris, would you turn that light on?
First of all, let me just say good morning to my friend, Skip Henderson, to my friend, city manager Isaiah Hughley, and to this body, amen of leadership here in Columbus, Georgia. We thank God for you and for all that you do, your selfless actions that you do on behalf of this city every day. Will you pray with us, please? Most high God, you are the giver of all good and perfect gifts in whom there are no variables. Dear God, Lord, we come today, heaven and father, to pray for this assembly and to give thanks, dear God, Lord, for their leadership. We realize today that government is ordained of God. Heaven and father, you have ordained them that they would lead this city, dear God, Lord, and that they would find ways to curtail anarchy in a city. Dear God, we realize today that we're living in unprecedented times. Dear God, Lord, we're seeing unprecedented things happening, like in Denver last night and even in Miami this morning. But God, we pray that as we navigate through unprecedented times, that you would give this body the wisdom, heaven and father, to maintain a spirit of altruism, dear God, Lord. And heaven and father, we pray, Lord, that they will have the vision, dear God, Lord, that when it seems as if the ship doesn't come in, you would teach us how to swim out to it. God, we pray, heaven and father, Lord, that this body, heaven and father, Lord, will realize that whether we are white, black, red, or brown, for all, you wore the thorny crown. So God, we ask, dear God, Lord, your presence in this meeting today. Heaven and father, there's something about your presence because we realize that God is love and because you indwell within all of us, dear God, through your Holy Spirit. Let that love, heaven and father, manifest itself on a daily, hourly basis, that the world might be able to see God in each and every one of us. We thank you, dear God, Lord, for the mayor, the city manager, clerk of council, dear God, each council member, each district represented here. And we pray for this city, heaven and father, that, Lord, the things that are done here, dear God, Lord, will promote things that will benefit our great grandchildren. It's in the matchless name of Jesus, who is our Christ, we make this petition in prayer. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, pastor. Thank you for your service to this city as well. If you would, please stand and join me in a pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God in the mission of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. We also have Counselor Huff, who's joining us, I think virtually today, so his votes will be registered on any decisions made by council. First order of business today is the taxpayers' bill of rights. We're required by law to hold that hearing as close to 9:00 a.m. as possible. So I'm going to ask our finance director to come forward, but also ask our city attorney, if he would mind, make a comment. Sir, hit your light and I'll get you. Can you get your light? There we go. We're having trouble with... There it goes.
There we go. Mayor, this is a hearing that is publicized every year under Georgia law. And the required advertisement has the word increase in it, but that refers to an increase in the tax digest for the whole county. And that is projected to go up. The value of all the property in the county is projected to go up. Therefore, we have to have these three taxpayer bill of rights hearings. Now, if folks out there have a homestead exemption on their residence, their taxes will not increase. But this is a required hearing when the value of all the property in the county is projected to increase. And I'll let Ms. Alexander walk through what she has.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As the city attorney mentioned, each year, the Board of Assessors is required by state law to assess the valuable... to assess the value of taxable property in the county. This includes residential and commercial property. When there has been an increase in the fair market value of the property due to any specific improvement or property sales, the Board of Assessors is required by law to redetermine the value of the property and adjust the assessment. This is what the state refers to as reassessment. And so state law requires the county to compute a rollback millage rate that would afford us the same total revenue in taxes from this current year's digest compared to last year's digest had there been no reassessments. So the rollback millage rate was computed. That was advertised in the paper last week. The advertisement also showed that there was 11% increase. Again, just to reiterate what the city attorney mentioned, if you are a homeowner with a homestead exemption, your property taxes will not increase unless you sell the home or move out of the home or there's been some sort of change in ownership that would remove that exemption. There would be no tax increase. The city's tax rate is the same as it was for FY '23. In Urban Service District One, the total millage is 17.53 mills. In Urban Service District Two, the total mills is 11.53 mills. And in Urban Service District Four, the total millage is 10.63 mills. These are the exact same tax rates or millage rates that were in place for FY '23. And those are the same rates that are being proposed for FY '24. This is the first hearing. Our second hearing will be this evening in this same room at 6:00 p.m. And our third hearing, which will be advertised, or was advertised in the paper this morning, will be next Tuesday, June 20th, again at 9:00 a.m.
And this is a public hearing, mayor. So if anybody wants to speak on this matter, the projected increase of our tax digest in the county, they can come forward, raise your hand.
Yes, sir.
Got one back there.
If you would, when you get to the podium, just state your name and your address.
Good morning. My name is John Anker, and I'm at 4755 Champions Way. And I've asked people to come forward. They don't know what I'm going to say. But they do have concerns, and we have concerns. And I feel like I don't speak for them. But I wanted to share some concerns I have. First off, Mr. Mayor, city manager, and city council, I do appreciate your service to our city. And it's a hard, complex situation that we're in. I want to make a passionate plea right now to get control of our spending. We've got a budget right now that's 332 million. Just a short time ago, it was 285 million. We only have income coming in of 322 million. So we're going to take 10 million from the fund to shore up the difference. And I understand that there's a lot of expenses, but I think we've got to get better control of our spending and prioritize where we are spending it. There's a lot of things we're doing right. And so I'm not here to be critical of all that. But what we're doing is putting that 10 million on the back of a lot of property owners. And when you do that, it affects the rent of individuals. So we talk about... We hear the buzzword rent control. Costs are going up on individuals in our communities. What... No matter which side of town you live on, the businesses who rent buildings to occupy their businesses, their rents are going up because of the tax digest. Please, you're voting on keeping the millage the same. We don't call it a tax increase. We say keep the millage the same. But I'd like us to roll back the millage. Let's be good stewards. The government naturally spends 100% of everything that it receives. And sometimes they spend more than they receive. So I would like us to be good stewards of our money and roll that tax rate back. That's what I'm asking for. I'm here today. My property taxes have dramatically gone up. I know this isn't an issue on property taxes, but it does affect our budget. And the people who are paying property taxes at fair market value, that's fair. That's me. But my taxes have gone from $66,000 a year to $97,000 in four years. Two of my properties went up 39% and 37%, respectively. I know that's out of your jurisdiction. I'll appeal. I'll get a fair rate, and I'll be happy to pay my taxes. I'm asking city council to please be good stewards of our money. Please shore up our spending versus our revenues. Please incent businesses to come and not leave. I think we're at a threshold now that some businesses are considering divesting in this community and moving to better marketplaces. We can say that this happens all across the nation, all across the state and other places. But that'd be saying, this is the way we've always done it. I'm going to skip ahead because I have a feeling I'll run out of time. But I would like to say that our state as a whole has been the best state to do business for the eighth year running. And there's a reason why we've done that. The state as a whole's been a good steward. This past year, they had a $2 billion surplus. And they decided, the legislator did, to give it back to the citizens. And they also did it while they were still incenting other growth. But Columbus has missed many of these opportunities. So we need to grow the tax base with more businesses, more small businesses, more people who are generators and payers. We're happy to pay our taxes, I think. I personally know some people who are trying to divest right now and leave, and that's why I'm here. I want city council and the citizens to understand the positive and negative effects of what we're doing. So please roll back our taxes, our millage rate. Solution number one is incent businesses and don't raise the few taxpayers at such a large percentage to cover inflationary costs. There's something called the property rights... The Property Taxpayers Bill of Rights that was implemented in our state law in 2000. It's Senate Bill 177 Act 431. And it states generally that the prevention... It's to prevent indirect tax increases resulting from increases to existing property values due to inflation. We hear a lot of inflation, and I understand that our city's struggling on inflation. Solution one, incent businesses. Solution two, grow the base, the taxpayer base. That's grow the economy. Solution three, lobby to our state and get these things fixed. The overall solution and the reason I'm here today is get the budget under control. 332 is what we're spending. 322 is what we've got coming in. And we're going to throw cash in there from our 10 million from our fund. And that's going to be on the backs of property owners and taxpayers. And it's going to trickle down to the rent payers, the stagnant wage growth. My employees want raises. I'd like to give raises, but I keep giving it out in other areas. And we need to be mindful of that. Attract business. We have the highest tax rate in the whole state of Georgia on sales taxes. And I believe we're getting dangerously close to having a negative effect. A vote yes to stay the same because we've always done it this way, keep the digest where it is. A vote yes is putting $10 million on the backs of the taxpayers. And I believe it's going to have a negative effect. So please, roll back the millage. Thank you for listening. I appreciate your service.
Thank you, sir.
Is it an open session?
Yeah, anybody that wants to speak can come up to the podium and speak. State your name and your address.
I'm Frank Lumpkin, 3225 Catherine Drive. I am in the insurance business, and I own some real estate. I've got tax increases from 52% on down. And it was my question to her is, does the state lock your digest if you don't raise it?
That question would be no. I mean, the answer to your question would be no. They don't lock the digest if the...
They can, don't they?
Well, they cannot approve the digest. If we don't do all of the requirements that are set forth by the state in terms of approval of the digest, which includes these hearings, they could not approve the digest.
Good morning. I'm Charles Mordick, H 643 Creek Rise Drive in Columbus. I'm a small-time landlord here in Columbus. So I'm in the trenches every day. I was born and raised here and know my tenants. And they know me. We're friends. And so I'm coming here on their behalf, pretty much, because unfortunately, unlike the last increases, these increases are going to have to be passed down to them because we can't incur this type of raise. One property in particular that I've got, it's 20 units on Crystal Drive, and it's a quadruplexes. But the people that are in there, they're good folks, and they're older folks. And in a lot of cases, they're on fixed incomes, and I know them. And it breaks my heart that I'm going to have to sit here and tell them that I've got to pass these taxes on to them because it's gone from $16,000 this past year on these apartments to $26,800 in one year. And they can't take anymore. They're already paying high gas prices. They're paying... Everything's through the roof. And they've already told me. I've had several of them have moved, and they're going to continue to move because unlike other cities, Columbus is a border town, really. We're in Phoenix City. And they... I feel that they are taking their sales and their tax dollars and over to Alabama, where gas is cheaper, the taxes are cheaper, and rent is cheaper. And that's just what I hear, like I said, being in the trenches. So every one of my properties have gone up. And I will appeal, of course. But just letting you guys know what's happening with the folks out there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mordick.
Hi. My name is Madeline Burns. I live at 4621 Nickerson Court, Columbus. I've lived here for five years. I chose this city because it just seemed like the best city. I didn't want to live in the north. I've lived in Los Angeles, D.C., Charleston. I've lived Atlanta. I've lived many places, and I chose this city because one of my friend helped. She says this city has a lot of growth coming. So let's work on growth. But I'm recently retired. I have neighbors. She's 86 years old. One lady's in her 80s. She's a retired teacher. So consider these people. I mean, I'm looking at this. I'm freaking out at buying two 2023 Chevrolet Solrados. Why not buy 2022, 2021, like I would consider? I don't need a current vehicle. I mean, as soon as you drive it off the lot, it drops. So consider that when you're buying. Don't think like I've got a bottomless wallet because you're picking the money out of my wallet and my 86-year-old neighbors. And we're on fixed income. I'm on a fixed income. And I recently retired. Now I have to consider getting a job. I can do it. I'm going to be 68 in August. I can work another job. I'm cool with that. But I worry about my neighbors. So work on that. Be mindful of how you spend the money. Last year, I bought a bottle of lemon scented ammonia. It was a dollar. I bought it earlier this year. It's a $1.69. I bought it last week. It's $2. Okay? So we're drowning in this inflation. So do what you can because you guys have the power. You have the ability. You have the mind. You have the authority. Use it to help us. Help these citizens. Help my 86-year-old neighbor. Please, if I have to beg, I will. I will beg. Consider us. Because some people are going to choose pay their property taxes, turn the heat off, take cold baths. Think about that. This is real. This is not pretend. It's my first time coming to a council meeting, and I'm going to attend more. But I am going to speak up. I will always be respectful, just like I expect you to be respectful, which you have been, and I do appreciate that. Thank you for your service. But please be mindful. We are not a bottomless pit. This is not the bank of Madeline Burns. Please, please, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burns. Welcome, sir.
My name's Louis Robinson, 3252 Maricopa Drive, Columbus. I'm a landlord also. And mainly here, I didn't know what to expect coming to this hearing. But now that I see what it's all about, the first gentleman, I have, I think, everything we all could absorb from this. If we're taking 10 million and putting it on the backs of the tenants, really, basically here, because as a homeowner, of course, we held on to that exemption. But also get phone calls every day for houses I don't have that are, used to be what would be according to most rents, affordable housing. We don't have any affordable housing coming online in Columbus that I'm aware of. And I work in a lot of areas too and with people that are becoming in the homeless situations that they're having. The landlords in this lower rents, I've got both of... A little bit of everything, owning is always going to go up on this type of situation. If we're using 10 million to plug a hole, we shouldn't be putting it on the people that we are least able to help. Because if you were having... If y'all are aware of really what affordable housing is coming online, there's something we don't know. But because I've looked through all that, and there's not any really, other than government programs in which I participate in also and helping other ways. But the main thing is the rent situation is not going to get any better. I've got 13 properties that I already know of, that I've already got the tax increase on, that I'm going to have to fight again. I fought some last time when we went to the new system. Had 18 properties. I ended up, in those cases, I won all 18 of them. But I don't think this next time that I'll win these next 13 because the comps are not as realistic as you think on some. And if you've got rent somewhere between 700 and 1,000, you're going to be now more at 1,000 up to 1,200 because of this great tax increase. If I could sell those 13 houses for what they're going to be, what's so-called been appraised on, you know, I'd get out of being a landlord. But I think that the appeal is, what effect is this really going to have on affordable housing? And I think when you think about that, and if the city has a position on that, let us hear it. Because when you can't get more housing coming online, what's going to happen to the people, like the lady says? You know, where are they going to come out? A pocket for it. They're not going to have an increased income, I'm sure. But anyhow, it's a situation that I think is very serious. And this is an only opportunity, I think, we have that we can hear really what is y'all's stand going to be on this. Thank you for your service and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
Anybody else? Okay, there'll be two more hearings just like this one. One this evening at 6:00 p.m. here in this room and next Tuesday at 9:00 a.m. Ms. Alexander, you have any final comment?
Not really. Not really.
Okay. Mayor, that concludes the first taxpayer bill of rights hearing required under Title 48 of the Georgia Code. And we can move on to other items.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Next order of business is approval of the minutes from May 30th. Is the motion to approve is our second? Is there a second? All right. Motion, second, approve the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Counselor Thomas.
Mr. Mayor, I do want to say to the citizens that are in here, we have not taken any action this morning. And I think it's because we have two more sessions to hear citizens. And it will be after all of that 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 action is appropriate for the council to take. So just because we didn't take a vote this morning, don't think we haven't heard what you've said. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And some of the things that were brought up, we'll, at the next public hearing scheduled for this evening, we'll have a concise response to those. Because some of those... The way they require the taxpayer bill of rights is... It makes it very difficult to concisely explain exactly what it means. So we will try to get the folks that have raised some of these questions and issues deserve to have some type of answer. We'll have them this evening at the meeting. All right. Next up, we've got a proclamation for Alternative Baseball Day. Mayor Pro Tem Allen has that. Is Mr. Duncan, Taylor Duncan, here? Do you want to go ahead and do that? Or do you want to wait and see if we can get him here? I don't see him. Okay. Here they come. Hey, y'all. Mayor Pro Tem. Mayor, it's my privilege to publish this resolution for you. Whereas Alternative Baseball is a nonprofit organization founded by Taylor Duncan, a man diagnosed with autism and sensory integration dysfunction. And whereas Taylor, now 27 years old, an honor graduate of James Madison High School and a student at Toccoa Falls College, is the creator and chief executive officer of Alternative Baseball Organization, Inc., a traditional-style baseball league focused on promoting leadership and life skills enrichment by implementing a safe, nurturing, and supportive learning environment for teens and adults with autism and other disabilities. And whereas in 2018, Alternative Baseball launched the Columbus Cobras, a local alternative baseball program originally managed by Mr. Kyle Carter and now managed by Mr. Jerry Ammons. And whereas on September 2nd, 2023, a traditional seven-inning baseball... Seven-inning game with regulation baseball rules with the sole exception of the type of ball used, starring alternative baseball players with disabilities, local celebrities, and community leaders will be held at Golden Park Stadium. Whereas the event aims to increase awareness for the need of providing inclusion... Inclusive solutions for teens and adults with disabilities and to encourage those with disabilities to become more involved in society. And whereas often individuals with disabilities become ineligible for many activities after they graduate from high school, Alternative Baseball fulfills that need. And whereas the city council of Columbus, Georgia supports collaborative efforts of the Alternative Baseball Organization and the Columbus Cobras in their efforts to provide leadership and life skills enrichment through inclusive participation in the authentic baseball experience, inspiring others to become the best possible versions of themselves. Now therefore, Mayor Skip Henderson of Columbus, Georgia, does by hereby proclaim Saturday, September 2nd, 2023, as Alternative Baseball Disability Sports Empowerment Day. Yes. You want to make some comments?
Absolutely, sir. I would be delighted to. Thank you all so much for the opportunity for us to continue raising awareness, raising acceptance, and really preparing those within our program, teens and adults over the age of 15 with autism and other disabilities for life off the baseball diamond. Because here, baseball is not just a...
Because here, baseball is not just a sport that we participate in. It is a, it is a mode for life skills enrichment, to be able to form the friendships needed to be able to integrate those with disabilities into the greater world, whether they take their skills they learned on the diamond to employment, wanting to get behind the wheel of a vehicle, or otherwise preparing themselves for independence, whi- which is something that, after high school, a lot of the services and to cut off at the age cliff after they graduate, and there's not much of, which this fulfills the need for us to be able to continue going out there and inspiring and empowering. And really, all we need as people with disabilities ourselves is one chance and one opportunity just to go out there and to use our own stories to inspire and empower others. And thank you all. Thank you to Columbus Parks and Rec Department, the Ignite Sports, and everybody in the community and beyond who have made alternative baseball a success in the greater Columbus area and beyond. And thank you all once again for having us here. Let's continue inspired and empowered. This isn't the end, folks. We've just started. We've just beginning.
Great, great job. We may see, if you're not booked, we'll bring you before every council meeting. We ought to start. But I will tell you that I had the pleasure of throwing out the first pitch and sitting and watching the game, uh, I guess a year ago, two years ago. It's great, it's great baseball. And it was fun to watch everybody playing and excelling and empowering them. Uh, and I think the only bad play all day was the pitch that I threw. So y'all did a great job. Counselor, Counselor Kogle?
Um, I, I just wanted to say, hey, Noah and, and Coach Jerry. If you, if anyone out there is watching and you guys have a, a, a group of people that is interested in playing the Columbus Cobras, um, I know we, we, my gym played them last year. We got crushed. Noah's a very good pitcher. We're scheduled for a rematch on July twenty-fourth, if you would like to come and watch, um, over at Double Churches Road. But if you, um, if you have any inclination of wanting to get involved in, with this organization, it is outstanding. They're very good. And make sure you guys come with your, your A-game. We look forward to playing you on July twenty-fourth. So keep up the good work, guys.
Can you introduce or let them introduce themselves? So folks will know who's here?
Go right ahead. Who wants to have the lucky opportunity to come to the podium?
Yeah, my name is Samuel Barrett. I'm actually from Phoenix City, Alabama. I'm one of the, um, players with the Auburn alternative baseball team, the Auburn Pilots. And they're just now starting to form. I did start with the, well, actually, Phoenix City had a team. And then I moved to Columbus when Phoenix City simply didn't have enough players. So I started with Columbus. I played in the game that, uh, Mr. Mayor, that you mentioned. I played in, at Golden Park that day. And now I'm with, uh, the Auburn Pilots alternative baseball team. And a lot of the skills I've taken from alternative baseball and from high school baseball as well, I now use when I umpire baseball. I umpire a lot of the games at Golden Park with the Columbus Chattahoochee and Chattahoochee Monsters. So that's something I'm proud of as well.
Fantastic.
My name is Justin Tyler Ammons. And, uh, I love playing baseball and I love Jesus Christ. And, uh, I just thank God for letting me play and thank y'all for being here and, uh, love y'all.
Yes, sir.
What position do you play?
I play shortstop. I play shortstop and, and catcher sometimes. So I'm pretty good at hitting too, so thank y'all. Thank y'all.
Good job, Ms. Ammons.
Hello, my name is Noah Seriot. I'm player number forty-two. In other words, during the past, uh, doing a long, long time ago, you know the player, Jackie Robinson, who was mistreated by white people? That's why I chose number forty-two, because I gotta control my tempo. I play pitcher, catcher, and mostly first baseman. And what I would like to say, uh, Mayor Skip Henderson, next time you, uh, come join us, please do another famous pitch for our Columbus, Georgia to see.
Noah, you're on. I'll be there, you guys.
And for you, Ms. Cool, my coach, Coach Jerry told me that you were part of the CSG.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry to say, uh, we, the Cobras have no choice but to defeat you.
Thank you. Noah Seriot out.
Thank you, Noah. Listen, you guys are awesome. I hope, Coach. I don't know how you're gonna follow all that.
My name's Jerry Ammons. I'm the coach of the Cobras. I, I, I take that back. I'm one of the coaches of the Cobras. I, I have a multitude of coaches that, that are there with me, that, uh, stand by me. We just about got a coach for every player. So whether it be a, a parent, or, or guardian, or a C.N., whoever it is, but, uh, they think they're getting something out of this, but they have no idea. So, um, we, we, we love it. Uh, Ms. Joanne, thank you for, for the game last year. That was, that was great. They, and you never know what's gonna come out of their mouth, so.
Well, listen, we are, we are incredibly proud of all y'all. It is great baseball. We stayed and watched that game. I'm not as good an athlete as Counselor Kogle. I'm not, I don't know if I'm gonna play, but I will be there to watch on September second. If y'all would come around here, let us congratulate you, and I've got a proclamation for each of you.
Thank you. Love you too, dear. Love it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great job.
Thanks, sir.
Great job.
Show me your back.
No, listen, bud. Hey, I'm excited. You're excited. I'm gonna give you the rest of these. If there's anybody else.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Cool, can I ask you one thing?
Okay.
Ms. Cool, as a player of the Columbus Cobras, I want you to know, um, you guys are gonna laugh. Then you know I'm gonna get a picture, right? If you're gonna bring heat, I'm gonna bring heat.
I'm bringing Counselor Davis with me.
Tell you. That sounds like a pay-per-view event is coming with Counselor Kogle's. Jim versus the Cobras. Great, great bunch of guys. All right, well, that, that, uh, ends the mayor's agenda on a high note. Uh, so we'll, we'll turn it over to, uh, the city attorney. Mr. City Attorney?
All right.
Oh, hit it again, I'm sorry. We're having a problem with your light. Can you turn him on, Chris?
There you go. All right, we've got a three-page business agenda. Hopefully, that'll be shorter than a baseball game, but well, first item up is the zoning at Salmon Road. We've got an amendment that's gonna be offered by Mayor Protem Allen concerning buffers. Is, uh, Mr. Carthick or Mr. Duncan here? Okay, we got the applicants here. Mayor Protem, if you wanna offer that amendment?
Mayor Protem? Thank you, sir. Good morning. We, we had, uh, just for council's benefit and public, we had a HOA meeting on Thursday night, and everything went well. We talked through some things. We were invited to come over to one of the property owner's home to kinda see what was going on there, what they see every day, what they face. And, um, so we did. We went over there and spent, uh, some time with them, talking and looking. I've spoken with, uh, the, the Director of Engineering regarding the, uh, elevation of the road and the sound and, and those type things, the noise they live with every day. And we're looking into, uh, what we can do with maybe a sound barrier, which would have to be approved by the Georgia DOT. Um, I have to be honest, I'm not real optimistic because we've asked for one up the street at, uh, Winfield for years, and they have not approved that. But we're, we've talked with, uh, the city about maybe sitting down and talking with, uh, some ideas for a buffer for that area that's being directly affected by, by the, uh, road improvements that will provide a right-in, right-out access to this property. And we'll have to have the arborist sit down with us, and we'll talk through some things, uh, make some suggestions. The Homeowners Association actually owns the property that runs parallel with Highway eighty that comes up to this property. So, uh, my understanding is that, uh, Georgia DOT will be purchasing some of the right-of-way from the HOA to put the, the D-cell lane in to make the right turn. So we're talking about some vegetation and some other things there to try to enhance the, uh, the current buffer that's there. So anyway, uh, I would like to offer, you may have it at your, at your table, uh, New Condition, number five. And I'll read that, which basically talks about, as I mentioned, the buffer and, uh, and, uh, on the west side and the, uh, and the south side of the property. And it reads as follows. "The developer shall plant and maintain a natural buffer of at least fifteen feet on the south side and ten feet on the west side, each to be planted with dense evergreen screening foliage along the entire property line as approved by the city arborist." So the city arborist will inspect this as, uh, as the plantings go along and the final, uh, final planting there to make sure everything is in line with the, with the ordinance. So I would like to offer this, uh, as a motion to add, uh, this condition to the, to the ordinance.
All right, there's a motion and a second to add that, uh, that amendment. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in fa- favor, say aye. Is this to the motion, Counsel Beglin? All in, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, Counsel Hough votes aye. He votes for it, so it, it's passed.
Thank y'all.
All right, with, with the amendment last week on the overlay and the one today, we'll bring it back next week on a second reading for a final vote.
Uh, Counsel Beglin?
Do you wanna comment?
Uh, one clarification I did get, or one question I received. For the, the diagram, at the top of the diagram, for lots ten, eleven, and twelve, it appears that there is a ten-foot buffer that does not have any trees or any kind of additional buffer. Is that the final decision and layout for that buffer between lots ten, eleven, and twelve?
No. Any, uh, removal of buffer or even reducing that from fifteen to ten has to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay, so this is what's, will get submitted to the, to the board, but it's not finalized until they approve it?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, that all the questions? We'll bring it back, bring it back for a vote as amended next week. Thank you. Next zoning item is.
Thank y'all so much.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That it? Next item up is fifty-three thirty-five Miller Road, the applicant, the Heitsons. And then we've got, uh, request here to go from residential, I'm sorry, single-family residential one to residential office, and it's recommended for approval. Any questions around the table?
Doesn't, doesn't look like it.
All right, the applicants here, is anybody in the audience wants to speak on this item? Okay, sir, we'll vote on this next week at nine A.M. Okay. The next item is nine-ten Talboton Road, going from residential office to neighborhood commercial for medical research office. The applicant, Mr. Clemmons, is here. Any questions around the table?
No, sir.
Okay. Anybody in the audience wanna be heard on nine-ten Talboton Road? All right, we'll vote on this item next week also at nine o'clock. The next item is a lot at sixty-seven hundred and sixty-seven oh eight Green Island Drive, going from single-family residential one to single-family residential two, recommended for approval. And Lyrian Brown, have a representative here? Any questions about this proposal?
No, doesn't appear to be.
Anybody in the audience wanna be heard? This is just, is it gonna be one single residence? Two, okay. All right, we'll vote on that next week. Appreciate you being here. Uh, finally, we've got a group of properties that are eligible for a conservation use valuation assessment. And this means that some of these properties are gonna go from residential estate one, technically, to a residential estate five or residential estate ten. This is the second group of properties that have been brought before council to, um, get these properties consistent with the U.D.O. and eligible for that conservation use assessment. And they've all been notified, of course. Any questions around the table?
No.
Anybody in the audience wanna be heard? All right, thank y'all for being here. Mr. Johnson, Mr. Renfro, we'll vote on that next week. All right, Mayor, now it's time for the hearing on the operating budget for the consolidated government for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. The Finance Director has passed out, uh, corrected first page of the ordinance with the total operating and capital improvement budget of three hundred and thirty-four million, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Uh, and then I understand there may be some amendments offered around the table. But we'll let Ms. Alexander kick us off with a few comments.
Uh, thank you again, Mr. City Attorney. As the City Attorney mentioned, um, I do apologize that the incorrect figure was listed there in the, um, budget ordinance that was provided to you all. There are no other changes to any of the other numbers that are currently listed in the ordinance. It was, um, just that, uh, mayor's proposed number that somehow made it, uh, into this ordinance, and that was incorrect. But what was advertised in the, in the paper last Tuesday was three hundred and thirty-four million, three hundred and thirty-nine, thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and, uh, sixty-eight dollars. Um, that is the, um, operating budget, um, for FY twenty-four, the proposed operating budget after the add-delete process. Um, there was about, um, close to one point six million that was added to, um, the budget, um, during the, during that process, and that's the difference that, um, we see here in this number. Um, there are, as the City Attorney mentioned, There are, as the city attorney mentioned, I've heard some adjustments that were, that council obviously would like to make. Again, this is a public hearing and it is first reading, and there are some adjustments that, obviously adjustments can be made to the ordinance before it's officially adopted. There is one ordinance, one adjustment that is being requested by staff. There is funding set aside in the budget for the contingency plan relative to the fire and emergency medical service. Chief Scarper is here to answer any questions for that, but we did have one private service provider pull out of service earlier this year, and we did put in, in the budget a contingency just to see how we might, just to see how things would go and see if we would need to employ more city staff in order to make up the difference in what was lost by the private carrier. The chief has requested that we proceed forward with some of the contingency that was set aside. It would, it would be to incorporate into the budget seven firefighter EMT positions, three lieutenant positions to provide the additional service, plus overtime and equipment. Again, this is money that is set aside in the budget in contingency, so it would be no increase to the number that you see here. We would just reallocate $1,2362 from the contingency to the fire EMS budget for this personnel and equipment. And also, there is a, an additional allocation request from contingency for a citizen services technician of $46,672, and the city manager can make additional comments about that. But the chief is here to sort of speak to the request of the fire EMS department.
Council Thomas?
Ms. Alexander, would you repeat the personnel for the fire EMS?
Yes, ma'am. It would be seven firefighter EMTs and three lieutenants to include overtime and equipment for those 10 additional staff members for a total of $1,2362. Thank you. Yes.
Council, uh, Council, Mr. Hughley?
Mayor, I, I would just say that the finance director has explained it, and, and those two items that she's bringing will not increase this bottom line. I just want to be clear about that. The money for fire EMS is in this budget under another category because we, the fire EMS chief, Scarper, I mean, he's talked to you, Mayor, and we've talked, the private ambulance services, we've got two, and they presented them with a price adjustment, if you will, that was going to be very costly. And, and then we considered the fact that it, it may be time that we bring the service back in house from at least one of the ambulance services at this time, and then maybe a little bit later, the other. We, we looked at, and the chief can explain it, you know that our paramedics, our employees on their off days work for these private companies, and they operate out of our fire station. And so we knew that this was coming, and so we just, we're trying to get out ahead of it, prepare for it, and that's why it was included in the budget, and that's why it just would be moving the money from where we're holding it into fire EMS to allow them to move forward with this plan. And so I wanted to be clear about that. And then the second thing that she mentioned, I mentioned to you that through omission error or omission, you know that we're moving into the new 250,000 square foot property, new city hall, and there are multiple entrances at that city hall. And we did not budget for a concierge, if you will, or an information person who would be at the information desk with a deputy sheriff who would be able to direct citizens when they enter the building to where they're trying to get to, the various city departments. We will have directional signs, but we feel like we need a person at that information desk with all of these entrances, and that's a building 250,000 square feet. If you think about that building and all the different entrances we have is just short of being the same size as the government center and East Wing Towers all combined. And so we do need a person, and, and we are not asking to increase the bottom line of this budget. We're asking that that come from contingency, and it would not increase the bottom line. And so Chief Scarper may want to comment on the fire EMS component.
Welcome, Chief.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Mr. City Manager, members of council. As was mentioned, it is our intent to replace the ambulance that was removed from service by one of our private service providers. That, the impact of that has been about an 18% increase on the call volume for our personnel, which we are trying to absorb, but we cannot sustain that. And so we are looking to replace that, that resource with this contingency money, and I'm happy to answer any questions in regard.
Council Davis? Hang on.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. City Manager, Chief, thank you. I have no doubt the services being provided are going to be provided extremely well and top notch and can be handled, and, you know, that's the cost of doing business today with, with the reality of it. So I, I think fire and EMS is going to do what they need to do, and we can support that. Where, where I'd like to focus, and I have many questions concerned, I think that the, the council needs to understand this too. It's not necessarily fire and EMS, it's the support services that are going to have to go along with it. And I think if we're going to do this model and we're going to move forward, I think we need to look at it as a whole on the support side, and that's not necessarily coming out of fire and EMS, because I know, I have confidence they're going to go out and do what they need to do. They're telling us that, and we're getting good reports of that. It's the other factors that lead in to overall providing that service and making sure that we're running it efficient and effective.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I think that's all, Chief.
Yeah, I don't, Ms. Alexander, do you want to get a motion on that?
We've got the Mayor Pro Tim as a question.
I just wanted to, it seems like over the years, we have had several ambulance, private ambulance services, and I think we're down to two. Is that right?
We are, yes.
So I, I think that there is a, that's the need I, I heard the chief talk about. I mean, we're, a, a lot of calls are, are, well, it's concerning when you have a lot of calls and you have ambulances, ambulance companies that are moving out.
Absolutely.
So I just wanted to make that point.
I tell you-
Make sure I was right on the, we used to have more than we have now.
Yes.
We, we did, and it's going to continue to be a challenge, and I think the challenge is going to grow over time, and it's going to be reflected, as Council Davis accurately pointed out, there's a lot of the stuff that goes into it with maintenance and things of that nature on the, on these vehicles. The chief and his command staff have been working for the last year on coming up with some creative ideas to hold down costs and enhance our ability to take care of the citizens. So I think you'll see some more ideas coming as well, that hopefully will be less expensive, but will certainly be more thorough and be a much cleaner process for assessing individuals in that time of need and getting them to where they need to be and saving perhaps some of the wear and tear of vehicles.
Excellent point, and to sort of add to Council Davis's point about the additional support, you know, the ambulance billing is handled in my office. And so as we do take on additional units, we add additional units to our, the city sort of sponsored service, that will have some impact on, in terms of the staffing that's in my office as far as the ambulance billing. One of the things that chief and I talked about sort of outside the box is something that we haven't done, I don't know ever, and if it has, it's been a very long time, is possibly looking at getting some assistance from a private, putting out an RFP of some sort for private ambulance billing. So chief, I know is sort of working on that, I mean, we're working on that in terms of an RFP.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's, that's something we've talked about for quite some time. I think that's all the questions regarding that. Council Begley the most?
I don't have, I guess the only clarification question, I think the original budget was 5.2 million for contingency. Do you have an updated number now that we've removed a couple, we've funded a couple of things out of that contingency budget?
Uh, no.
Well, you know-
Not this time.
But I will say, the fire EMS component was put in contingency, and the contingency line item would not have been included that sum of money if we were not trying to think ahead and accomplish what we needed to accomplish with fire EMS.
But I, I can get that for you.
Yeah. I, I just want to be clear that we typically would not have that sum of money over in an account.
No, not in, not in contingency, absolutely not.
Yeah.
I mean, as the city manager mentioned, that was about three, close to three and a half million, 3.4 million that's in that contingency was relative to the fire EMS. And that actually was for more positions than the 10 that the chief is currently asking for right now. I think it was a total of 30 positions. So.
All right, Council Begley?
One additional question about the concierge, just trying to understand, the cost, is that concierge just at one location? So if there are multiple doors, you know, someone comes in, the door where the concierge isn't there? I mean, is there, is there signage? Because I do understand that is a more complex problem than the current one because of all the different entrances, but just understanding, how does the concierge service all the different entrances, and what is the cost of that concierge?
Yeah, so in the, the building, when you see the layout a little bit later, there, if you come in from First Avenue, for example, you're looking down a long hallway and you can see the information desk, if you've ever been in that Sanovis property. If you come in from 12th, I think it's 12th, you're looking down that same, it's like a T, you're looking down that same hallway and you can see the information desk. If you come in from the parking garage, you see, once you hit the door, the information desk. So the deputy sheriff and the information person will be there, and they will be able to see people coming from three or four directions because it's, because of where the, the desk is sitting. And, and the reason it's going to be a city services technician is that if that person has to take a rest or break or lunch break, someone will come out of the city services center and fill in. And that person, we anticipate, will also have all of the technology that they can also service citizens with online requests for work orders, if they're not greeting citizens, they're not just going to be, they're going to be multitasked. And so if there are work orders coming in, they can do them right there at their desk, but, and then they can service the citizen when they walk up and point them in the right direction. But there are multiple entrances and, and, but, but because of where that desk is located, they can visibly see people as they enter the door. And we're looking at some other things too that, because it's like this building, it's, I mean, it's a massive building, but, you know, we're not scanning people because it's not a court, we won't be because it's not a courthouse, but we're looking at some other measures, technology that will help make sure the building remains safe as people enter. We've looked at some things at some other facilities locally, and, and I'll just go ahead and say it, you know, if you, there, there's technology at some buildings, if you walk in and you walk past that technology and there's a weapon, it's going to send something to, let's say, the person at the information desk where the deputy sheriff is, that will say, this person has a weapon. And if five of us walk in there together, it will photo, if you've got the weapon, it will photo five people, and it highlights that you have a weapon and where it's located. So we're looking at that technology as well, but an information person at that desk, a deputy sheriff, but technology that will help to make sure that that huge building, 250,000 square feet, that, that people, citizens and employees remain safe.
All right, we've got a number of other questions. Council Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the movement of this money from the contingency fund.
All right, that's a motion and a second to move that money out of contingency to cover these two items. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Council Crabbe?
So I still have questions about the concierge. I don't have a question about the necessity of it, but I do, unlike the other positions that we were given a price tag on, this one wasn't given, this, we did not get a cost on. And also, I'm just wondering, is it, since it's coming out of city services department, are we just going to put a employee that's already working for city services in that position, or is this a new hire?
It, it would be a new hire, and I think you did mention 46,000.
Yes, 46,672.
Yeah, but it would be a new hire, that person would be trained, and, and obviously, everybody in the city services center would be cross-trained, the city service call takers, they'll all be cross-trained because everybody will have to, you know, when called to the desk, you, you, you call the service.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. Remind me again of when Sanovis will be moving out of the building? When, when will that occur?
Um, well, Sanovis is out except for the, the bank portion of the building, and I do believe that is in 2025. But Deputy City Manager Hodge can provide more of a timeline as far as that project.
Yes, so they'll be moving out of the bank building in July of '24, and then we will renovate the executive tower and plan to move in the first of '25.
I guess I was just trying to figure out or see if there was a way that their person at the concierge's desk could help us until they're gone, and then we could have someone there that would give us some time, or is that not feasible?
They, they don't have anyone in our building, they only have employees in the executive tower.
Okay.
And so we are cutting off their connection to our building and our connection to their building because of the sensitivity of-
Right.
-what they do and what we do.
Okay, so the person they have is outside of the building that we're going to be moving into currently?
Yes, their person is in the executive tower, and as the city manager stated, we have enclosed the executive tower separate from the other buildings at this time.
Great, thank you.
Council Kogle?
I just had a further amendment, and if we're done with that conversation.
Uh, it's been approved, so, you know, we're done with that.
Okay. I'd like to make an amendment to the budget to earmark three days out of our, our fund balance for the pickleball complex. I realize that we're going to have a meeting on Thursday for the pickleball complex, but I think that it's kind of important that we, I think this will be the sixth meeting, that we go into that meeting with the intention that the city is going to back that complex so that we can get that ball rolling forward. And it's from my understanding that they have entered into a semi-lease agreement with Columbus Water Works. If you're not familiar with the location, it's between Veterans and Second and Talboton Road, I think it's Talboton, right there, right below Piedmont, in the Water Works footprint, and that will allotigate for 24 courts, I believe. And just to put that in perspective, Opelika started with 12 courts, 12 courts, and now has expanded to 20-plus courts because they couldn't accommodate at 12. So I know, I realize our SPOSS dollars are going to, are going to Cooper Creek, and the parking and the noise and the competitiveness with sharing the courts with CORDA is probably, I mean, we can proceed with that, but I do think that we need to earmark three days, which does come out to 1.8 million. But I'd also like to include in that 1.8 million that we earmark, $150,000 for EA Sports and, EA Sports, which is a, the online gaming. And unfortunately, Councilor Huff is not here to speak on that, but I know that's a project that he's been working on for, over at the Civic Center. If you remember, Rob Sanders, Rob Sanders, Landers, Landers, sorry, sorry, Rob, if you're watching. Rob had, had kind of gotten that, that started and had great success with that, and I think Councilor Huff has taken some charge on that. So that 150,000 out of that three days can be managed and overseen by Parks and Rec, but I do think that we need to earmark that three days. So I'd like to make that motion of earmarking the three days unless somebody has-
Motion second. Any discussion to that motion?
Does Councilor Huff want to comment? I'm just, I didn't know if he's still virtual.
I sent him a message, I don't-
I'm here-
Yeah, he's- I sent him a message, I don't, he's online, so.
Can you hear me? Counselor Davis?
Hello? Counselor Kogle, I'm really glad you're making this amendment because I, I really think it's time for us to get behind this sport. We've been missing out for so long and there's so much to gain in our community by this. It's just, it's something that's just growing at such a rapid pace and more and more people are getting involved. But the main, the thing I like about it the most is we really don't have a, an anchor or a true, what I would call a true rec facility in the Uptown area, and something that unites the whole community as well and everybody can have access to it. But what I see here, I'll tell you, I, you know, I thought I put my own equity in it, it, it just, just sounds so good. But being a spark plug to ignite development in Uptown, we need foot traffic desperately, we need purchasing dollars down there for the small businesses. We've got so much happening around the Fetch Park area on that side, we've got High Side, we've got Uptown, we need to get the people there. This sport is attracting people like I've never seen before, and it's only going to get bigger. And I will make a bet that at the end of the day, that the return on investment or the sports tourism dollars we get will be bigger than any other venue that we have in this community. And we've got so much to offer, there's no other urban sports venue in the southeast that can come close to what Columbus, Georgia can do. And all that equates to is more people going to want to come here and they're going to want to play here. The pickleball folks got an outstanding project envisioned here, we need to get behind them. And what I wanted to say, Mayor, is that the money, it's my understanding, the money remains in the fund balance, okay, because there's commitments on both of these requests. Counselor Kogle, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding, it's just similar to what we did with CORDA, CSU, the public-private partnership out there, the city's gotten involved. But this money will be managed, there are a lot of conditions. The pickleball folks in the community, there's a lot of money that needs to be raised, there's a lot, there's a capital campaign that needs to get going, there's a lot of tangibles that need to happen before the city executes the agreement. And I would think, Mr. City Manager, at the end of the day, that all that has to be satisfied before the city does anything, before we write checks. Spend their money, everything, before we get involved, but we need to step up to the plate. You know how it works here, nobody's going to write a check unless they see that we're behind them and we're supporting them, and they want to know that. The Water Works is now getting involved, we talked about initiative over at the waste management site, that was an idea, over by the Mill District, that was an idea, but now it seems like they've got something ready to go, and we need to show the community that we're behind them, and they'll step up the plate and support this. So I think it's a tremendous initiative, we always talk about the "its," the "its" projects, this is an "it" project, capital I, capital T, all the way. And as far as, the same terms and conditions that I'm roughly speaking to would apply also to, I believe, the 150,000 for the EA Sports. That's a tremendous program that Councilor Huss been involved in, I'm excited about that. That's a whole nother group that we don't reach out to that we can, it involves crime prevention, involves a lot of children that just have other, I guess, they're attracted to other opportunities and activities, and we can do that, it's just a matter of, Mr. City Manager, of your office, Parks and Recs managing that, being able to what they need. But I think they want to get out and raise money too, and they're trying to fill in the gaps as well. And the same terms and conditions that we're applying with moving ahead with the pickleball complex would also be the same as EA Sports. So I just wanted to make that, that, you know, there's a lot that needs to be satisfied, that's going to be in the works. But I think the key here is that, you know, earmarking this money and showing our commitment, doesn't mean we're going to spend it today or tomorrow, it's probably going to be a year or two plus, there's still a lot that needs to be done. But if they're willing to step up the plate and do their part, I think we need to do our part. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor Protem, is this the motion?
For the record, I wanted to ask Angelica, Ms. Alexander, if she could identify how much that would be for each day, you know, I think it was three days, how much, how much would that be?
The value of a day for FY '24 is 600,509 dollars.
I couldn't, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, 200, did you say 200?
Oh, the total, I'm sorry, hang on. I thought you were asking for what the day was. So the value of the day is 600,509 dollars, and for three days, that would be a total of 1,801,527 dollars.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think the city manager had a comment.
Well, Mayor, first of all, I, I just want to say that I absolutely agree with all that has been said related to pickleball. And we've got a, an update or presentation on my agenda today to address the matter, and, and, and so we've got a meeting either this week or next week with the pickleball group that you, you make reference to, Counselor Davis. And, and I can tell you what our approach was coming into this meeting today, and that's why you're going to get an update. The, the first thing is we want to share with you that we do have pickleball around Columbus, and we're going to tell you the locations. And so there, there's three approaches to this that we've got, so that's one thing that you'll hear today. And then the second thing is that in the special purpose local option sales tax, we, the citizens funded pickleball for Cooper Creek, and so we will have pickleball at Cooper Creek based on that, and we will be able to utilize existing staff out there to manage the pickleball courts and all out there. And then the third thing is that we are going to be meeting with the pickleball group regarding the location and their partnership to Water Works and so forth. And then we anticipate that we would be asked for a partnership, and we would want to partnership with them to create the complex that you were talking about, Counselor Davis. And once we meet with them, unless, I mean, I don't know that 1.8 million dollars is going to do it, I don't know if it's the amount needed or if something less or something more, but our goal was to meet with them and look at what they're trying to do and look at, you know, their availability of funding, and then what they expect from the city in terms of level of support and so forth. And then we would come back to you, the council, and ask you for that level of support to be a part of the partnership. And so if you feel, you know, 1.8 million is, is, I haven't had a conversation with them, I don't know what's needed. And so, but, you know, if you say 1.8 and we go and talk to them and they say we need 2.5, then we got to come back. So it was going to be, we're going to come to you one time with an ask after we meet with them, after we determine, you know, our level of partnership, what they expect, what they are looking for from the city. And then we would come back to you and make an ask for that partnership. And so we can do it your way or we can do it that way, either way, I support and we support the partnership with this group at some level, and if you've already determined that level, that's fine. But it would be, you are determining that level before we sit down with them to determine who the players are. Water Works is going to do this, the city is going to do this, and the private sector is going to do that. That's how we did Cooper Creek, that's how we did Ox Bowl Meadows, and so your approach is just different from my approach. But we, we're all after the same thing.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Begley?
I agree with the comments made. I, I guess my focus is, you know, while I was on Development Authority, we continually heard, Columbus is such a, a great secret, we had no idea this was so cool, every event we had, people just bragged about Columbus and that they didn't, they were unaware of how amazing a city we had. And so my goal with this would be to attract people to Columbus, I think that's where we see the biggest ROI, because we get the message out, people experience Columbus. And I'm assuming the best way to do that is to, you know, have a great tennis facility over at Cooper Creek, and then have a, a pickleball complex that can attract these tournaments and attract people to Columbus, and so we get to hear more of these people visiting for the first time saying, this is a great city, I can't wait to come back. And so that, that would be my goal in accomplishing this.
All right, Counselor Davis?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I, I know time has gone by and we may need to rethink some things of where we were in the past and where we are today, a lot has transpired. But this is the same approach that we took with CORDA, I was involved in that, CSU, others. We're, we're your city manager, it may turn out to be we need more money, I mean, I'm open to that, but I think right now, we just need to make a commitment that we're heading in the right direction. The money still stays in the fund balance, there's still, this is not going to happen tomorrow, there's going to be some years that go by before all, before the commitments are made. So if things change, there's a lot of time that the terms and conditions can continue to be worked out, and that's the working relationship. They need to get on chart, charted course to let folks know that we're behind them and go out and raise what they, they're going to probably have to raise two-thirds of what we just talked about or even more, but that's the commitment, and that's what they got to do, and that's what they're willing to do. So there's, there's terms at the end of the day, and it's probably going to take a little while, so I foresee us having enough time, we just need to get behind them and rally so we can get the ball moving. But I do think on some of these other conversations about pickleball, we may need to rethink that a little bit and how we approach that from a recreational standpoint, but this is certainly at a, at another level, and the question of duplication starts entering into the, the picture as well. So we, we do need to be concerned about that, and quite possibly some of that funding, as a city attorney has, has alluded to, could be used in other areas that are designated as priorities that are on that list. So I'm not there yet, but I know these discussions are going to take place, like you said. And, and we were very specific to citizens about how many pickleball courts we would have at Cooper Creek, I think it's 12, maybe, 12, we said 12.
I know the story, I know the story.
And of course, I, you know, I was also, you know, involved with Cooper Creek with Will White, who came to visit, and, and we just happened to have sales tax money available that we could use, and so we committed 1.7, and then he, he took it from there, so. And you may choose to go to a different funding source later, that's okay with me, but right now, just earmarking the fund balance, because that's where, that's where everything's being held, and it, it just gets the, it starts the engine and gets it roaring, we just need to, we need to play catch-up here.
All right, Counselor Kogle?
Yeah, we, I mean, we might be beating a dead horse, but it's the same thing as Counselor Begley said of, it's really great that we're going to have courts at Cooper Creek and at some locations that are around, around Columbus, but it is, from an organizational standpoint of the maximum amount of return on our investment as well as, as economic impact for Uptown and the surrounding area, that complex is going to be pivotal. And, and just moving forward, just the, you know, we can, we can come back and, and do it your way, Mr. City Manager, but I, I do think that this is the, the, the better way to go, just so that they can get the ball rolling, so that we don't have to come back a couple months down the road when they could be out collecting checks. I do think that there's a lot of people that are waiting with their pen and paper right now, and if we delay it anymore, then we're just delaying the inevitable and we're missing out on those, we're, we're missing out on those opportunities and basically giving other cities a, a leg up. So now's the time, and I think we've made a motion in a second, so. But, and also thank you, Counselor Davis, for reminding me that it all is managed the way that the CORDA was managed, so I, I did forget that detail, so you are correct.
Well, and obviously with a positive vote, I think you've got the best of both worlds. You've got a tournament facility that drives economic development, and you also have a central hub of paddle sports, including tennis and, and for the citizens, as promised, as well as some of the things in some of the rec center, so. All right, no more lights on, so we'll call a question. The motion was to earmark 1.8 million dollars out of fund balance reserve for pickleball, reserving 1, was it 150,000 out of that for EA Sports for gaming? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, it's approved.
So with that, the new operating budget total for FY '24 is 336,140,895 dollars. That would, utilizing the additional three days, would leave 69.40 days in the general fund, I'm sorry, 69.12 days in the general fund, 40.70 days between the other local option sales tax funds, for a total of 109.82 days.
Could you repeat the number, 336 million? Thank you.
And, again, that was 69.12 reserve days for the general fund and 40.70 reserve days in OLOS.
Okay.
All right, any more questions around the table or possible amendment?
Hang on, Counselor Begley?
I would like City Council to revisit the decision we made. Parks and Rec requested several capital investments or machine, machine purchases. One was an ABI forceball field machine at 42,490. We initially declined to add it to the list, I, I would ask us that we revisit to put it on the add list. My understanding is it could save us 28,000 a year, so over the next couple of years, it, it pays for itself in savings, and so I would like to make a motion to put that on the add list.
All right, there's a motion second to add, to the motion, Counsel, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Could we get an explanation of exactly what this, what this does?
Is Holly here? I mean, I, I can, I can send her email, I think the explanation I got via email was that, or do you want someone else to speak to it?
Well, she should be here, so.
Well, no, I'd rather her speak to it than me read her email.
Okay.
While, while we're waiting, I can read her email, and then she can expand further. She said it would allow us professionally regrade all of our baseball and softball fields. Traditionally, we have not been allocated money to have these services contracted, and our only other means has been to sod cut impacted areas, replace them with new infield mix and sod. The estimated cost of this method is 600 dollars per field for over the 50 fields. And she was saying by purchasing a machine, we would save, she, instead of spending 30,000 per year to do the 600 dollars per 50 fields, it would approximately be 2,000 dollars per year because we would only have to purchase the infield mix.
Thank you. All right, to the motion, Counselor Davis?
Yeah, I just, I think I know what Counselor Begley's talking about. And it, you know, I would like to hear a little more clarity on exactly what that piece of equipment does. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't there some other parts to it? I think in some transmissions, I saw trailers and necessity for.
I think that was, that was a separate item.
Is that a separate item? Okay. Because this may go to some of the things that I talked about earlier, about the maintenance of the fields. And we put away money for a grant type, I don't want to say grant, probably a reimbursement that if volunteers are out there doing the work and save us later, and they're buying materials that they, we can help and assist. We've got something we're working on. But I, you know, does, my question would be, you know, I, I want to understand what exactly this piece of equipment does, because laser grading is totally different than leveling and grass cutting and all the rest of those things that is talked about. So help me understand, all I want to know is help me understand the clarity of how that's going to improve the, the fields for the children to, to play every day, because that, that is a concern. And, and we've discussed it several times.
Certainly Holly can answer that question. But in terms of what was added during the add, delete process, was $100,000 from reserves for park maintenance.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So in regards to the ABI forceball field machine, the machine would basically allow us to professionally regrade all the baseball softball fields that we manage, which is over 80, I believe 80 something fields here locally. Traditionally, we've not been allocated to be able to do this. We've contracted it out. The most, most recent time we contracted was when we did South Commons, for those of you back in 2019, for USA Softball. But basically, this would allow us to more professionally regrade them. Sorry, I'm out of breath. I was trying to get here for you guys. But it would allow us to do that versus having to contract it out to other vendors. It would allow us to not have to put in as much sod, hopefully, long term, which is what we do now, and infield mix. And I think that's what our explanation was, is that we buy a lot of infield mix now to offset. We wouldn't have to purchase as much. So to Counselor Begley's point, that's where the, some of the cost savings would come in.
Do you all regrade them every year?
Yeah.
Okay. Counsel, Counselor Thomas?
Do I understand you to say that we currently contract all of this out?
No, we do not currently contract it out. We haven't contracted it out in years because we haven't received the funding. We have requested the funding to be able to do this, but we have not received the funding. The last time we contracted it out was in 2019, 2018, when we were preparing USA Softball to come in for South Commons, and we redid.
So how are the fields prepared now?
Now the staff does it. We do it with our resources. We're just not able to do it to the standard that it needs to be done. To Counselor Davis's point, a lot of times we end up with lips on the ball fields. Because we don't have the equipment, this would be that piece of equipment to allow us to professionally, or in the realm of professionally, regrade it ourselves. Right now, they're not being done. Right now, they're, we redo and rework the fields, but not to the standard that we need them to be, because we don't own the piece of equipment to do it. We basically have to go in and fill in as much as we can with dirt and extra sod, and it still doesn't get it to the standard of what it needs to be. That's what creates the lips on the ball fields around the outside edge.
Tell them what happened to the lip.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir, Counselor Allen. So athletic speak, the ball field lip is when the grass gets higher than the dirt on the infield. So you have a difference like this. So you have grass that's here and dirt that's here, or vice versa. And to Counselor Allen's point, what happens is the ball pops off and hits a kid in the face, or they get hit in some part of their body, or the ball jumps away from you, because it's not a level playing field.
And do you currently have, do you currently have a staff person that can operate this machine?
Yes, we would. We would have probably more than one person who could operate it.
Does it require a trailer?
It would fit on what we already have. It's not too heavy. I don't underst, I don't believe it'd be any heavier than our current ball field equipment.
Well, I, I have to tell you, I have a little concern about this, since we did discuss this in the regular budget meeting and decided not to put it on our add, delete list. $42,000 is, well, I also know that I have been told that the, the South Commons field was a total wreck this last month, whenever the NAIA was down there trying to play ball. And I don't know who did that, who prepared that field. But I understand that not only was the field in sad shape, so were the water fountains that didn't work, the scoreboard didn't work, the first inning, all of those kinds of things. And if we're going to keep, attract and keep these, the, this level of competition, we've got to make sure that, that we've got somebody that knows what they're doing when they go down there and try to lay out those fields. I, I just, I just am a little back and forth on this, and I'm not sure yet how I'm going to vote. But I understand that this is a step that you think is in the right direction. But I'm just really concerned and upset about the condition of some of our fields that are currently under the Parks and Rec control. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I could respond to her comments about the field. So as you guys recall, I've come to council previously, we were having the lights replaced with Sports Council at South Commons. So we had all the LED lighting replaced and the additional five-field complexes. Well, as a result of that, most of the games have been played in the, the three-field area where the, where the stadium is, if you will. And so they've had to take on a great more amount of play, and that's in addition to the 40-plus weekends that we operate out of 52 weeks a year. We had to play a lot more games there in an effort for safety, because the other fields had the lighting being replaced. And so not only that, but at the time, we were also having all the trees that were removed from the, in between the fields. And so from a safety standpoint, more of the games were played in that one area of the complex than we traditionally, even with the 40-plus weekends, would normally play. So yes, to your point, they are not to the standard that we would like them. But it's due out of necessity for the risk and the safety of those who participate and come to our complex. And the fact that this is the only complex that we have in the city of Columbus to play adult and tournament play on. None of our other complexes are to the standard that we can play tournament play on.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, ma'am, let me find you.
Just in the last two years, year or so, Mr. City Manager, you can probably help me with this, didn't we allocate $5 million to Parks and Rec to clean up that, and fix up that South Commons field? Didn't, didn't we do that just within the last couple of years?
Well, yeah, well, the Sports Council, we partnered with them, of course. And I think there was a funding, a fund, that, but yeah, we've made investment along with fundraisers by the club, the Sports Council. Yes.
That was in preparation, I think, for the Olympic swing that they did through when the USA team.
It was just a year, a couple of years ago, though, right? I mean, it wasn't.
Yeah, it's, it's a few years ago, yes.
2019.
Yeah, pre-COVID.
And, and that was supposed to fix the scoreboard and fix the bathrooms and fix the water fountains and all of those kinds of things. It wasn't necessarily for the, for the field itself, as I recall.
So it was actually for all of it. It was for the fields, the scoreboard and everything. But again, with such high usage that we see for all of our amenities here in Columbus, it's just like your car or anything else. Everything has to be continued to have work done on it. So yes, to your point, yes, there was funds that were allocated. But we're at a point where we've played four years. And again, we play 40-plus weekends a year with people there. So we've just, money has to be spent to, to make improvements and repairs continuously with the usage that we see.
Thank you.
Counselor Begley?
I'm sorry.
You put your light again. You don't.
Oh, I didn't mean to request.
Okay. Counselor Davis?
Mayor, I was going to say, Director Holly, what you, Browder, what you explained a while, while ago, coins the phrase, watch your lips. You've heard that before, right? I've got many stitches across the face from that various thing happening over the, over the course of the years. But help me, help me understand a little bit further. We talk about the, the need for personnel, you're short personnel. With this piece of equipment, I guess you're going to have to go around and take care of all these fields, and there's going to be some extra work involved. But i, is, am I reading that wrong and how this works? Or is it going to delay time? Is it going to add more time? Are you going to need more people to work the machine? I'm, I'm trying to get a clear picture of, of what we're talking about here. And at the end of the day, is it going to make a huge difference and help Parks and Recs and, and help our facilities? I mean, that would be the main question.
It should help on the facilities. That's first and foremost. It should help on the, the actual fields and the space itself. I can't really talk to the, the difference of time, because we've never owned one of these machines. So I don't know personally how long it's going to take. Obviously, yes, to Counselor Thomas's point, yes, we do have staff that would be trained and could use the machine. But it will, to your point, have to go to every complex in town, because that's, I mean, we don't have any of them that have been redone outside of South Commons. So Northern Peach, I mean, across the city, all of our fields need to be redone. But we would just have to do the best we can. As I came to you guys, I mean, we desperately need staff. I mean, as the department goes. But we would do the best we can with the resources we have. So to Counselor Begley, who, who previously asked that question, would it save and would it be cost savings? Absolutely. Long term, it will be cost savings for the city, because it will allow us to do a better and greater job and have to purchase less resources over the next few years, which would eventually pay for itself. Does it mean that the machine's going to be here in five to 10 years in excellent condition? No, because look at how many fields we have that have to have the work done. It's just like your lawnmower or anything else that you personally own. If you have to do a lot of work with it, even though it's a commercial grade equipment, at some point, it has to be work done on it, and, and it's not new anymore.
Would you consider this an item that's high on your priority need list now?
It is. But we have a lot of items on the list that priority.
Let me, Mayor, I'm going to go off the range like I'm known to do every once in a while, but I'll get back quick. Okay? You okay with that?
I'm fine. We'll go grab a bite, Dean. I'm just kidding.
Ms. City Manager, Director Browder just made a, a point that I think we need to really expand on while we're having this conversation, instead of bringing up at a later time. This is the right time, I think. But there's been concern about upgrading our facilities and getting our parks and recs where they need to be. And look, it's no fault of anybody. It's just the needs are so great and not having the people, the personnel, and, and grasping it and understanding it. But at the end of the day, we need to start looking at that. There's been a number of assessments that have been made on our facilities. There's been, including this pickleball complex. I mean, the, the outside consultants have even confirmed what we're, we discussed today. But there's a list of priorities out there that, you know, there's a point, you hear me saying this all the time, there's a point of no return. And at that point of no return, you might as well tear it down, start all over. But we're going to have to get these facilities back to the level and help the director and help Parks and Recs to do that. How do we do that? I don't know. But it reminds me of like eating an elephant, you know? We might have to just do a little bit at a time. And what we don't have is a strategic understanding of a roadmap and what we can chip away at every year.
Yes.
We can't do it all. I mean, the requests that continuously are brought to us, 30-plus million to just get everything up, we can't do that.
Right.
But how can we chip away and start working on this? It's got to happen, and we've got to think about it. We've got to talk about it and have this conversation. And I'm wondering if the way to do it would to be to involve a third-party consulting group to come in and really analyze all that and get the help we need and come up with an, you know, what we can afford, based on the priority, based on the return on investments like we talk about, based on sports tourism. There's a lot of things. You know, I hate to hear people say we're losing tournaments to other counties and other parts of the state, because we're just, we're, we're not, I mean, we're just status quo. So that's a concern I have, and I'm just throwing it out there, Mayor. Now I'm coming back on the range. I'm finished.
And Mayor, I'd just say quickly, you know, Parks and Rec, for years, as the director has said, and even before her, they come to us, you, me, with a needs list every single budget year. And it's, it's a huge list of, of ask. And, and there are things that we just have not had the financial capacity to fund. And, and my mind is going back right now to, and you'll remember, and I think, you know, Evelyn Turner-Pew was, was on council at that time. But they were coming and they were, they were asking, and she was advocating, use some of your salary savings and savings, you know, because she, they were asking the budget year that we could not fund in that upcoming budget. But they would have $300,000 of savings. And they would say, go ahead and use that savings and go ahead and buy those things. Now, you may remember conversations when they were complaining about the soccer fields, the cutting, and the lawn mowers were leaning to one side. And so to get the grass even, they would have to go down one side with a leaning lawnmower and turn to come back and go the other side to try and even it. Anybody remember those conversations around this table? And so we needed lawn mowers simply, I mean, we couldn't properly mow the soccer fields. And so there's been a long list of needs. And we could bring a consultant in and have a consultant do a needs assessment. And they're going to point to a lot of the things that we already know. But the thing is, when they do that needs assessment and point to those things, then the question is, where will the money come from? Can we fund them? And so, you know, the piece of equipment that Counselor Begley is advocating for, and, and the director, is needed. And, and, and we have 1,900 acres of Parks and Rec property or so. And, and you said, we've never had one of these machines ever in Columbus, Georgia, with all of the fields that we have. We've never had one of those machines. And we need it. And she just described to you, and if someone gets hurt, they're going to ask. And then if we get one machine, she just told you, we got to drag it all over the city to every, because, you know, you can't do one ball field in one area of town and not do the other. And so you're going to wear that machine out, because you're going to run it all over the city. Everybody's going to want a level ball field. And so the needs are, are great. We just don't have the funding capacity. And they are going to do, we're going to do the best we can to make sure we provide the best facilities possible in Columbus, Georgia.
Okay, Counselor Crabbe.
Thank you. I'm listening to all of this conversation and even the conversation before about changing the millage rate. And I, I think those that are still here that, you know, was requesting a change in millage rate can kind of understand the, the delicate dance that we dance of needs versus collecting funds. We, I mean, we have facilities that we are not maintaining. We had to, like what Counselor Thomas brought out, we did an emergency $5 million spend to bring a facility up to standards so that we could have, host a tournament. And we react all the time. I'd, I'd like to see us get to the point where we're being more proactive. So because I think So because I think in the long run, if we are more proactive, then we are going to save taxpayer dollars. Because we're talking about forty-two thousand, round it up a little bit, five hundred. Do the math, Tyson, and tell us how ma- how many times that goes into five million? I mean, we, um, you know, this is, this is something that we can use to maintain the fields. And so we're not being reactive. And I know that that five million didn't just go to the fields, but some, it, a lot of it went to other items that are permanent. You know, the lights, scoreboards, you know, seating, things like that. Those, we need to be proactive and take care of the facilities that we have. And it kind of makes me a little bit concerned, we're talking about building another pickleball facility. We have got to think about maintaining these facilities. This is what draws people to this city. It's what we, we need in order to do that draw. And if they're not in good condition at all times, then we need to think twice about building new things. I'm not saying, don't build the pickleball, but let's just put our focus on what we have and taking care of what we have before we just go out and spend a bunch of money on new, new shiny toys. Let's take care of what we have.
Thank you, Counselor Tucker.
Um, yes, Director Browder, if possible, can you send us that presentation that you did during the, um, budget session? Cause that, that will help. But I will ask, how do we proceed with getting a consultant? I know that you were doing a consultant for Carver Park, but I do agree with Counselor Davis that we need to do, um, have a consultant. That way we can do a needs assessment, but also address what Counselor Crabbe was saying, the maintenance plan and also, um, funding. Because what a lot of people don't know, say for, in District Four, because we're not a qualified census tract, when you apply for these grants, District Four can't get grants for en- for any park. So our playground right now is non-existent. You know, if, if, one of the things I, I would like to see is that to be listed, what areas don't have a funding source to be able to replenish, you know, or actually renovate those parks. Because that's, that wasn't, to me, I didn't see it high on the priority list. So that should have been one that was high on the priority list, because we don't have anything out there. And that's a concern for me.
Uh, Counselor Tucker, to answer your first question, we would work with the finance department to get an RFP, to get a consulting firm or consultant to look at our amenities. I would also say that, you know, in twenty seventeen, we did a facility assessment. We worked with Public Works, um, and other departments across the city and did facility assessments. Um, and most of our facilities, um, ranked very poorly and had funding, um, dollar amounts that were attached to that. So, um, this is not something that we have not addressed and have not looked at. We've also looked at it annually in our reviews that we do internally across the department. But to answer your question, yes, ma'am, also in regards to, um, the census tract and the grants that you previously asked about, um, your district is not the only district that does not apply. We have a lot of districts. Thus, when we did our budget request, we had to do it in such a way because there are a lot of areas in our community that do not qualify. So we're not able to, and specifically playgrounds, since you referenced playgrounds, we're not eligible to do replacement under some of the grants that we've previously used. Um, and so we grouped them collectively because we need such a large number. I think it's somewhere between thirteen, fifteen playground replacements. Even though since twenty fifteen, we've already replaced fifteen to twenty playgrounds, um, locally with grant funding. There, the greed of the need, I apologize, the need is greater than what we are able to access.
All right. So, um, when I was looking at that, I think it was close to, what was it, thirteen million dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
For Parks and Rec? And, you know, I was quick to say, put all of it. And I know we can't find all of the thirteen million, but what I would have really liked to see, were those, those, um, playgrounds that can't receive funding because they're not in the qua- like broken down instead of the group, because I couldn't pull it out based on the thirteen. I didn't know which ones had whatever amount of money that was allocated to it. And we definitely couldn't say all thirteen because it was, you know, a high dollar amount. But if we could have just broken, broken down the parks that don't receive grants, because we know that it's so many grants out there. And I think I had just sent you one a few weeks ago that we could apply for. But the ones that can't receive the grants, I think that's more of a high priority. And then also do it based on age. So meaning, when was the last time that park, uh, or, or playground was replaced? So just breaking it down because when I'm, I'm looking at the, um, the list of thirteen, I mean, it was just grouped together, so we couldn't, we couldn't pull it out. But it would have been good to, to break it down. I know you're trying to, you know, be inclusive, but some areas have, they, they qualify for these grants and some don't.
Those thirteen do not. The ones that are on our list at this point do not. Um, I'll be honest with you, um, and I'll give a presentation later today that does include three playgrounds. And, um, for the most part, those thirteen, that, none of them qualify any longer. We've reached a point where we have been able to use that funding as far as we could. And for the most part, have kind of dried up that area to the point that those thirteen, and certainly we could list those out. And before I send it to you, I will, I'll go back in and notate those before I send you the, the presentation you requested. Um, but none of them, I don't think at this point, will qualify. And that's where we are. Unfortunately, that's why we asked them for a group, because we no longer have that avenue as an opportunity to apply for that outside funding, because none of them are in the census tract.
And out of those thirteen, um, playgrounds, like, you know, I just hate to keep harping on, um, Shirley B. Winston. But, I mean, it's, it's nothing out there. Like, there's no swings. The kids have nothing when they go to Shirley B. N- nothing. Um, I don't know about the other parks. I know even, at least Carver Park, I think they at least have the swing sets and stuff like that. But it's nothing out there for, for, um...
The playground does still exist, it's just not to the, to where we would want to be because over time, we've had to remove areas such as the swings that you referenced. Um, but that's a common trend across the city because that's why we've asked for the funding to replace those playgrounds. Because we reach a point where we have to remove items, um, for safety. Um, and when it becomes a safety hazard, we will do so. And most of our playgrounds have reached a point where they're so old that either we don't have a part that we've kind of scavenged from another facility to be able to replace it with, and they're no longer manufactured. So we can no longer purchase the parts if something breaks or gets torn up, that we just have to take out the entire portion of that amenity. And thus, that's why we've asked for the playgrounds for replacement on our list because unfortunately, we've reached that point where without the replacement, there's nothing we can do. And we are very frugal and we are very, um, gavish, if you will, I'm not sure that's a word. But being able to take parts from our older systems, once they are no longer usable in an area, perhaps there's still some value or good parts to it. We do salvage those just for reasons like this. But unfortunately, these systems are fifteen to twenty years old and the, the manufacturer doesn't manufacture them any longer.
What was the dollar amount for those thirteen?
I apologize, I do not know off the top of my head.
And those, we didn't, we did not include those in our sploes, did we?
We do for some, for those parks that are getting replacement, like you mentioned Carver Park, yes. Playgrounds, if it's in one of our areas for sploes, um, funding, the playground will be renovated.
Okay, I don't think Shirley, Shirley B. was listed on that. And see, that's, that's what I'm saying as far as, and I, and I kind of go back to, to Counselor, um, Davis in reference to a needs assessment. We, we didn't address that through, in the budget. We didn't address it in sploes. We can't aggr- address it in a, in a grant. So it's not be, it's not gonna be addressed. You get what I'm saying? It's not gonna be addressed for those kids, you know, and families at that park. But in certain areas, like Carver Park, it'll be addressed. But Shirley B. is not gonna be addressed. I don't know which other parks weren't included in sploes. But if we don't actually have a needs assessment and show which funds are being allocated to whichever parks, it's like we're just kind of, you know, going off the seat of our pants right now. Like, not knowing the direction of what needs to be, what need to be done, um, regarding funding for our parks. So I think we just really need, need some, need to take a deep dive in how can we improve, do a process improvement for our parks.
I think you're right, thank you. Uh, Counselor Kogle?
With Counselor Davis and Counselor Tucker, um, I, I think if we have the, this independent priority plan in place, I mean, I can think of, uh, off the top of my head, in District Seven, where we're dumping thousands of people onto something that we look at on every single piece of marketing material that we have in Columbus, that we have no water fountains that operate from Oakland Park all the way down to the Highlands Dam. And, um, it's eighty thousand degrees outside, I don't know if you've noticed that. But we have, um, we have people who are, I mean, just take a look at this weekend downtown and uptown where we had, uh, the GOP conference, we had, um, Miss Georgia. I mean, it was hopping downtown this, in market days. It was so busy downtown that I, I mean, I could not park on my street, um, for Saturday and Sunday. I, I, I unapoloitiate left town. So, um, but, you know, we're, we're, we're asking people to walk on our, on our Riverwalk with no water sources. We don't have any bathrooms that go from Bulldog, Bait and Tackle, uh, north to, unless we open them for a sanctioned event, um, or, uh, it's permitted by somebody who's paying twenty-five dollars or whatever the cost is, um, to open it for their event. We just, uh, we're, we're failing our citizens in, um, in having these just basic necessities in, in addition to, to playgrounds. And so I think if we have this independent priority plan, we can, we can kind of prioritize which, um, which projects need to be taken care of first with the funding that we have. I think we're, we're in a pretty good situation with our city right now. And so, you, you know, I think now is really the, kind of the time to take control and, and be proactive instead of always being on our heels and being reactive, um, in the city. So, um, and then along with that, you know, uh, and having a, a three and a five and a ten-year plan, just so that we don't get behind. And I know Counselor Crabbe is, is, is big on building in maintenance plans so we don't get in this mess in fifteen years, um, you know, and, and sit here and have the same conversation every single year about how we need to, um, up our game with Parks and Rec or we need to, you know, provide these, um, basic amenities. I mean, we're talking like water for our citizens, which, um, you know, water shelter is kind of, uh, an, an important thing, so.
Counselor Barnes?
Good conversation as usual when we get on a topic that we're trying to learn how we can just crack this thing here. And, um, I agree, um, we need to be more proactive than, than reactive. And, and it needs to be a plan. So I think, Glenn, you're right. This is something that you've said about a number of other things that, that we need to just stop and take a, a general, um, look at. But I just know from being on council that Holly has come each year with a bucket list of things. And everything is approved by this council. She brings it to us. And she's kind of like hamstrung. What I think needs to happen here, and to your point about having a consultant, I don't know of a better consultant than the one we have here is Holly. She is the one who's been boots on the ground. How long you been in Parks and Recs, Holly?
Uh, twenty-one years here. I've been in Parks and Rec for twenty-five, but twenty-one here in Columbus.
So we have the best, and, and you're right, we need to, what you're saying is that we need to stop, get off the merry-go-round and sit down with an expert and come up with a comprehensive plan. Because to what Joanne and what Toya and what Charmaine has been saying is the fact that we need to come up with something with some meat on the bone that we can say, we need to slice it here, we need to slice it there. And the best person that could do that is Holly. So I'm not for us spending additional money bringing a consultant, but we have the, the best one here. And I think what we need to do is, in other instances, like with Recorder's Court, we come up with a group of counselors who will sit down with the department and sit down and discuss and absorb. Because everything that approved, that's approved comes from council. So what I would present is that we need to do the same type of a thing. We need to allow her an opportunity. Because Holly has come. It's having the, the funding, the, the money, Mother Hubbard's covered, it's been every time. But, um, drinking fountains downtown, water park, um, these, these are amenities that, that, that we need to really give to the citizens. The citizens deserve those things. And we do have a bucket list, a huge one. But we need to start working along with Holly, us counselors, to whittle away at these things. A lot of good information about what you were talking about, Toya, with the grants and things and that. I didn't know anything about that. But these are issues that Holly does, because she answered you right away.
Oh, yeah, we talked.
So we need to glean her years of experience to come up and have her say, look, this is, and with feedback from us, these are the things that we need to, to do for our citizens. And I'd like to commend you, Holly, you and Drill Short, on the big turnaround at Cooper Creek. I, I've gotten, when I was out, out of town, calls about the, the bathroom, the latrines, calls about the, the pathways, about the lighting, and all the things, the pathways, all the things that were a problem that you two have gotten together, you two departments. And you squared them away. And I'd like to thank you because my constituents there are very happy about that. But I think, Counsel, what we need to do is, we need to organize it, just a group of counselors like, like we do for, for other things, to get, to get together with you, the expert, the one who knows A through Z. And we need to sit down and we need to formulate a plan. One of the things that I, that, um, I saw Mr. Broadwater's going in the military, one of the things that kept a lot of us in is this one statement, that we repose trust and confidence in you. And that means a lot. And so we repose trust and confidence in you, someone who's been in Parks and Recs for twenty-one years and knows Parks and Recs, to come up with solutions and to tell us, we're the ones that you generate. Somebody mentioned something about a spark plug, spark plug, to, to get us moving and doing things. And so that's my, I want to throw that out there, if we can come up with a group of counselors. Yeah, that's, that, that doesn't mean a motion, we could just say we can agree to do that, or does that need one?
But no, you don't. And I think what, what I would prefer to see you do is, is let, is let, um, uh, let the staff talk with Holly. Holly's presented this thing, staff brings it every year. And they have got, they have put together in the past plans on how to do sustainability. I would charge staff with sitting down with, with Holly, let them create the plan. Because as you pointed out, they're the experts. You don't want a mayor or, or counselor sitting down trying to develop that three, five-year plan. I think we just charge staff with, this is what we want and, and set a date so that we can start looking at it in time to im- impact the next budget. That's what, that's what I think I would, I would recommend as opposed to, uh, burdening council with that.
Counselor Tucker?
No, I just wanted to make sure, um, the, the citizens know we're not beating up, uh, Director Holly Browder. She does a great job. She's doing a lot with the small budget and staff. So I do appreciate you. However, Mayor, I do think that we need to, because we have... However, Mayor, I do think that we need to, because we have some concerns as council, um, some of us. And if we could do like a small group meeting with you, Holly, um, to talk. And it's not just us, and I know, um, Gladys Ford probably has called you or emailed you. It's, it's also us as counselors speaking on behalf of our citizens. You know, what they're, and really that's what it is. Us as counselors, you know, coming to you on behalf of the citizens who have some serious concerns about our parks and recreation. So I do think that we need to actually have a small group meeting so we can set that up, um, with some.
Absolutely, because as you know, in the conversations we've had, we share a lot of those same concerns. And to Councilor Barnes' point, a lot of it is budgetary constraints for us. But we share the same concerns that often our citizens do. Um, and just to the city manager's point, we do as much as we can with the budget and the staffing that we have. Um, we'll do everything we can.
Yep, so let's just set up a meeting and then we can, um, you know, develop a plan.
Thank you. And to your question, Councilor Tucker, the cost in our budget presentation for playgrounds was for the 13 playgrounds was 3, was 3.1 million dollars. Uh, but that is not an accurate number. That was to account for three playgrounds that I'll be back later today to give an update on. So that cost will be less than 3.1 million dollars because we have received some funding elsewhere that I'll bring forward in just a little bit.
All right, Councilor Davis?
Director Broader, I just want to go on record as saying you're a wonderful director, okay? And you've got good people and we've got good Parks and Recs facilities.
We do.
We're talking about trying to help you. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to do things in our community to upgrade and get it where it needs to be. You come every year, you bring these things to us. We're just trying to figure out a way to help and, and do it with what we have within our means and prioritize at the same time, whatever it may be. Whether it's a facility, whether it's a bathroom, whether it's a water fountain, whatever, we can just keep, we, we've got to help you. And we're just trying to figure that out and, you know, it just opened the conversation, just opened up to where we can discuss it today. So I want you to know, I hope you always know that we're, we, we, we think highly of Parks and Recs and we're always trying to help you insist. It just, we got to figure it out as well. You do the best you can with what you have and what you get. So we appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
And all the men and women of Parks and Recs.
Thank you.
Councilor Thomas?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we do have a motion on the table that I would like for us to get back to the motion. This has been a delightful conversation, but it has nothing to do with the motion that, uh, Council Begley made.
Okay. Councilor Begley, is this to the motion?
Yes, I, I agree. Uh, in the spirit of everyone supporting.
I was asking, just leave it there. There you go.
Yes, uh, in the spirit of everyone supporting the idea that we should provide Holly more equipment, I would like to revisit, uh, the motion to purchase the equipment that should pay for itself, uh, that has been seconded.
Okay, so.
Proceed.
All right, Mayor Protem is your comment to the.
Yeah, yes, I, I would, uh, a- as a word of caution, when we open a door like this and we go back to a department and ask, what do you need? Uh, it, it opens the door for other departments to come back after we've already approved the add and delete list. So it concerns me that we're taking this step. I would, uh, like to ask if we could, um, maybe delay the whole thing till mid-year. I mean, I, I'm just, I'm real concerned about the precedent we're setting by, by doing this. It's, it's, uh, it concerns me with us reaching back out to departments and, and doing that. I, I admire the, the aggressiveness and, and the eagerness to help. Uh, I, I want to help Holly and provide this piece of equipment. And it, it's since she has not been doing it, uh, been able to do it for a number of years, the, uh, the need to me is there for the equipment and, and we could visit it, uh, visit that piece of equipment. But if we start allowing each department to come back after we've already approved the add and delete list, then we're, we're undercutting the process of the budget, budget sessions and the budget committee. And, and that's what I wanted to caution us on. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Councilor Begley, is this in response to?
I, yeah, I, the, they did not reach out. I reached back to, out to them. Uh, I'm new to council. They did not know my criteria for approving requests. And so I wanted to get more information. And so this is not her asking, again, this is us revisiting our decision. Um, I, um, I, I, I think if we delay a decision just because, uh, something that pays for itself just because that's not how we always did things, I think that's kind of the, the thing people get frustrated with government that, hey, this is the right decision and you're just not making it. And so I would, I would like to proceed with it at the current time. Okay.
And we'll call it as soon as everybody's finished, I think. Uh, all right, there's no other comments to the motion. So all in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed?
No.
All right, all those in favor, please raise your right hand.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
All those against? Okay.
Huff voted in favor. Huff voted in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
All right, so, uh, with that, uh, inclusion, uh, the amount is, uh, 336 million, um, 183 dollars, 300, uh, eh, starting over, 336 million, 183,000, 384 dollars. 384 dollars. Uh, so right now we're at, um, 69.05 days in the general fund. So we're back in the 60-day mark as far as reserve days in the general fund. It's 40.70, um, days for OLOS for a total of 109.75 days. Um, right now, in terms of reserve usage in the general fund, we are up to 9 point, I'm sorry, 9,176,580 dollars. Across all of the operating funds, that total is 13,885,336 dollars of reserves being utilized for FY24.
All right, um, which city manager?
And Mayor, just a, a quick note, I, I know that we've had a lot of discussion with Parks and Rec. But, um, on June 9th, you know, I received an email about 11th and Bay restroom. And I, I just want to read it and I'm done. Uh, I just received a report from our janitorial crew that the new mirrors and freshly painted walls had graffiti on them this morning. Our crew was able to use graffiti remover on the walls. The new gray paint looks a little faded, but the graffiti is gone. The graffiti remover did not work on the mirror. The crew is currently back en route to pick up a razor blade to try and scrape the mirror. And so, you know, the last time we replaced a toilet in that restroom, the next day, the restroom was destroyed. Toilet's broken, the works. And, and so this is what we deal with, with restrooms and park facilities all over town. And I thought I'd just share that with you. So when you hear the restroom's not open, it's locked, you know? Uh, I think the last time, I think they've been, I don't know who it was, but they went down and replaced the toilets and the next day, they were destroyed. And so we deal with that week in and week out, just for your information.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, if there are no other questions around the table, we'll vote on the figure that Ms. Alexander just gave us for the total FY24 operating budget. Vote on it next week at nine o'clock.
Are we still in the public hearing part or not? I'm sorry. I didn't know if you mentioned that it was a public hearing.
We still have a few more to go.
Yeah. We're still, still in a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to comment on the operating budget? Got somebody?
Yes, ma'am. That's your name and your address, please.
Stephanie Callahan, 5245 Ray Drive, Columbus, Georgia, 31904, District Eight. Uh, good morning, Mayor, City Manager and members of council. Um, thank you for the opportunity. I'm sure several of you've got a couple of emails from me this week. Um, I am co-chair for your Columbus Golf Authority, which is a city-appointed committee that according to the city description, um, is responsible for the operation of three city golf courses, Bull Creek, Oxbow and Goblin Creek. I'm here regarding, um, your current budget. Um, there was a city-recommended budget item. I'll refer you to page 77, um, under Code 2300 titled Goblin Creek. And, uh, Mr. Davis, you had referenced, this board has been so supportive of so many things. And I do thank you for that because this is the first year that I feel like Goblin Creek had received that support. Um, you had, um, recommended a budget of 28,300 dollars for Goblin Creek. And I was appointed to the budget committee for Goblin Creek, I'm sorry, for the golf authority. And when we had submitted the original budget for Goblin Creek, I had recused myself from that being submitted, but I did come up with a budget for you, it was 50,000 dollars. And thank you again for allowing me that. Um, we talked about the different things about, um, I'll, I'll call it kicking the can down the road because we've got so many other things that we're working on. And with Goblin Creek, there's a current lease, I mean Charmaine, I did find the one that was signed last in 2014. Um, we haven't had an active one. Um, so if I need to change my hats, um, I also oversee a charity for children. It's called Four Kids Columbus. And because Goblin Creek's not actually a budget item for the city, the Four Kids charity has maintained that for the city and for its charity for 12 years. Um, it's recently, in the past couple of years, because we've had to deplete some of that fundraising to update the roof, the gate and some tree removal, we're starting to spend more money on the golf course itself versus the charity. Um, I believe that under our bylaws, that whenever a budget comes back, because I was on that budget committee, we're supposed to review and accept it and vote it from the golf authority to come back. However, the golf authority as a whole didn't see this add or delete session. Um, and we're told at our last golf authority meeting that, um, it was too late, it was in the city's hands. And so I just felt like that was kind of odd. Um, again, because I've been doing this for 12 years for the Goblin Creek Golf Course, I wasn't on the golf authority. And for many years, anything that I had reported on, um, under Mr. Milam at the time, um, was just passed on. And so I never really got any detail back or any responses to questions. So now that I'm on the authority, um, I feel like sometimes those same questions that our newer members ask are getting the can kicked around instead of coming straight back. And I'll cite some examples. Um, when we asked questions in regards to just like this situation at our last meeting, um, well, who determines who gave you the money or how you're giving the money as far as Goblin Creek? And we were just told Angelica. So thank you, Angelica, you got great credit. Um, but it was also asked, well, how is it that we can pay for one golf course as expenses out of another budget? Um, and the expense portion of it was, or the excuse that we were told was that, well, you can't have a budget without the revenue. And so, uh, Mr. Davis, I wanted to comment to you because you're right, there's a return of investment. Um, all these years that Goblin Creek has been, um, operated by Four Kids, it's been zero expense to the city and we've invested in our kids. Some of these kids and some of the adults that get to play out at Goblin Creek, again, zero expense to the city. Um, Ben Carr will play in the US Open this week, came through our program. Um, Vince Allen, uh, one of our, uh, local pastors, got his first hole-in-one just last week. But it's because of that return of investment that I feel like the money that we are generating throughout the other courses as well, because after our kids outgrow the smaller middle school programs that we oversee, they go on to play Oxbow and Bull Creek. And those high schoolers come back and play their championships at Oxbow and Bull Creek. I'm sorry, not so much Oxbow, but Bull Creek. And they go on and they go on and they go on and they feed the community. I just feel like that return of investment should speak more volumes to the fact that it's understood that this chipping away of 28,000 of your little, of our budget um, couldn't pass because someone or some people on our board, without an official vote, thought it'll never happen. But I wanted to ask the question, if it was already in the recommended budget, does that mean that it, it happened, we just had to vote on it? So I would direct that question, you answer, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
That's right. So, uh, there was a budget that was, um, submitted to the finance department during the budget, um, process um, from the golf authority. It did include, as Ms. Callahan mentioned, um, about 28,000 dollars in expenditures for Godwin Creek. Every time I get tongue-tied when I say God, God, Godwin Creek. God wins.
That's right.
Um, so it did include some, some funding. Um, one of the conversations that I, and I, and I, I don't, I'm not a part of the authority. I don't attend the meetings, so I don't know what goes on, um, in the meeting. But one of the conversations that was, um, brought to me, I believe it was by staff, was, um, wanting to, uh, establish Goblin Creek as a enterprise fund. Of course, from my perspective, from an accounting standpoint, you can't have an enterprise fund where you have expenses with no, no revenues. Um, you have to have one and the other in order for us to establish a, an enterprise fund. So, um, the, the suggestion was made, um, to incorporate Goblin Creek. Um, if that, since it is a facility that is overseen by the golf authority, um, they're wanting, if they're wanting, if they wanted to provide some maintenance funding or whatever, they could do so in the budget, um, submit, submission, and they did. And so, um, what ultimately was presented before, um, the council during the mayor's recommended budget included, um, as Ms. Callahan mentioned, about 28,000 dollars in, um, expenditure line items for, for Goblin Creek. The golf, the golf authority, um, essentially contacted myself during the, um, add, delete process to redistribute some of that money. Again, I don't know the back ends of the conversation, um, but the, uh, what was presented before the council was a reallocation of funding. Um, it was a budget neutral request, um, that council, um, considered on the add, delete list and ultimately approved. And so that adjusted the, the line items within the budget. But, um, but I will say, you know, once a budget is officially adopted, the authority and any other department has the ability to move money around in the budget with the exception of personnel, uh, because those expenses, um, we do distribute throughout, uh, the government. But, you know, from an operating standpoint, um, departments do have the discretion to move funding around. So I don't know if, um, Jim or Mr. Wright here, in, in addition to Stephanie, has some commentary. But that's all that I have, um, regarding what was submitted, so.
Thank you. So to confirm, there wasn't a golf authority vote to reallocate those funds. The, the golf authority in full never seen this budget review after it came back with the 28,000. We were told after the fact because it was told to us that, well, we had to act fast. This was informed to us on a Wednesday and we had to turn in something by the following Tuesday, which to me is not a small window, um, I think it's a rather large window. Um, my husband happened to be in the hospital at the same time and I still went to work. And so when I got the call, I said, what do you mean, this happened and now it's not going to happen? And it almost felt like a Braves game. When you're in the bottom of the ninth and you're one up and you're playing Detroit and it's like you go to sleep and you wake up and you're like, how did we lose that? It, it was in, it was approved. So, um, as we discussed, um, already, this budget item had been something that we have tried. And again, we, as in Goblin Creek, I'm the director of operations there. But I do that because I'm for the Four Kids Columbus charity. So we have tried and tried and tried to help get more money to just maintain the golf course. We're not asking for any of this, these dollars for our charity. We're hoping that this little chip, as we're chipping away at updating the building and the course, um, for the city, um, that we can use more of our fundraising for our kids. Um, I referenced this information in an email to the, most of the board, um, that every day that we don't invest in these kids and we're not investing. that we don't invest in these kids, and we're not investing all that we can because we're maintaining a golf course, we're literally working in our charity to keep the course open. We have, we haven't been able to hold camps, for our summer camps, for the past three years. One of those years was because of COVID, but the other two is because we didn't have the funding. We had to clear our own trees last year in the winter for $10,000. We had to replace our own roof the year before, another $10,000. And we do it because we love our kids, and we don't want to lose the course. But at a certain point, our Board is kind of scratching their head, why are we doing it? So I'm sorry if I get emotional, but it is, it's important. It's not, it's not cheap or easy to maintain a golf course, but it can be with just a little help. And like I mentioned in the email, our Board for the Four Kids, we're willing to still help maintain this course without being a hundred or $1 million budget item. But without your help, we can't continue to maintain or grow our program. In 1998, the Council passed a resolution naming Goblin Creek for Bill Gobins' efforts on behalf of the youth of our community. Four Kids hopes to continue that legacy with the support, and any support that we get, even if it's a little chip of $28,000 for our original mission of sending our kids at Goblin Creek and everyone else. They talk about wanting to support kids, everybody talks about it, but when it comes down to it, we don't, because they don't see the return of investment that you mentioned. And I mentioned full disclosure, because I think the Golf Authority, for years now, has tried to update our lease for the building. The lease in question, I think in 2018, when our Board had received the new renewal, said, well, can we please get the bathrooms up to code, because we had a handicap person that fell trying to get into one of the bathrooms? And we said, sure. So we did send it back. Again, this is prior to me being on the Golf Authority, so I'm not sure how it's handled. But in instances, just like this budget edit, that kind of seemed to be kicked around and just, the answer given, given to the Authority was, oh, it's out of our hands. I just feel like sometimes the miscommunication is done to mask certain things so that we don't take care of what we need to take care of. And I'm being, I'm being honest about it, because even our Board members had asked, well, who do we ask these questions to? And we trust our Director, and Jim Orton is a great Director. When we first hired him, three years ago now? Four. I was part of that new Board. I voted for him. I prayed that we would get another one, because we've stopped so much bleeding that we actually have a reserve now. And it just makes sense that we continue to grow the game of golf, and in order to continue that, it's not a feeder program, but to continue that, maintain that future growth, Goblin Creek's kids that are growing up through our middle school and our high schools will one day play at that course, those courses. So I felt like it's a healthy reserve. Why would it even be questioned to give this golf course that's supposed to be under the Authority a small budget? And we could reconcile it, and literally, we're just paying the employees that are already city employees for maintenance on that golf course. The parts and supply costs that are incurred for those services, we pay for. The city sees none of that. So on behalf of Four Kids Columbus and Goblin Creek, I hope that it's not too late that that budget item could be considered again with your support. And I'm not going to tell you that our Golf Authority will vote yea or nay on it, but I think that our bylaws say that we're supposed to vote on it, and it's not supposed to come down to just two people.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Callahan. Counselor Thomas? Hang on.
Mr. Mayor, the City Attorney and I have been having a little sidebar, and I would like for him, if he would, to tell the Council our options about renewing the lease and also about if we want to move some funds into that budget. So if the City Attorney could do that, I would appreciate it.
I will. I'll tell you what, no, I may need Ms. Scheffdahl's help, because she's dealt with the research on it, but there was a lease, a five-year lease, that expired in 2018 with the Four Kids entity. There is no current lease in effect. There's been discussion about possibly getting another one between the--
Did you say there is not?
There's not, there's not a current lease in effect.
That's correct.
There's been discussion about entering another one between the Golf Authority and the Four Kids Group. But terms are going to have to be worked out, where the proceeds may end up going to the Authority, and this Council's going to have to decide whether they want to make any reallocation. And the big budget that we're dealing with right now in public hearing, do y'all want to allocate any more money to Goblin Creek? Or do you just want to let the Golf Authority enter a lease, saying whatever proceeds they take in will go to the Authority? But you have those options right now. But if you're going to add money up, you know, an allocation, additional money, you need to do it now while we've got the budget on first reading.
So we do not have any conversation ongoing about a lease, is that correct?
Well, I think there have been discussions in the past, but there just was never--
But there are not--
There was never a new lease entered into.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I think, let me think about this. I think I would ask our City Attorney to take a look at this, the issue of a lease, and then how that lease could include, if we wanted to do that, money allocated to the--
Goblin Creek.
Creek, golf course. That's a suggestion, I can make it in the form of a motion if that's needed. But I do think we need to have a serious conversation with these folks about the lease and what it means, and where the money is coming from, and how much money that is, and so forth. And I'm not sure that that's something that we can do right now, but as Mayor Pro Tem Allen is always saying, we can always come back to this at mid-budget, mid-year, so.
Well, yeah, and I don't know that we need a motion to go revisit, make sure that that lease is taken care of.
I mean, we can come up with a proposed lease in, you know, a matter of a week or two, but, you know, do you want the proceeds from the Four Kids Group going as rent to the Authority? And then anything else they take in, they use out there to enhance their operation? Or are you going to make a specific allocation today while this budget's on the table to Goblin Creek operation?
The only thing I will say from an editorializing standpoint is, I know, I've been familiar with that course, I've never, actually never played it, I don't think, but I've been familiar with that course, it's been referred to as a hidden little jewel in an area of town that doesn't have a lot of jewels. And I will tell you that, you know, we, that course has been functioning with, and it may have changed, but years ago was little to no assistance, other than loaned maintenance folks that would come out there and help cut. The city periodically would help clean out that pond, and, but it had all been volunteer-driven. And it used to be a haven for kids from all backgrounds, all colors, you know, all socioeconomic levels, and they would be able to be dropped off there, and they could get clubs there and go play and learn a game on that, on that course. And a lot of them learned a game that they would never otherwise have been exposed to.
That's right.
So I think that from my, the only thing I would say is, I think it would be more than just a shame if this were to discontinue operations because of what it affords kids an opportunity, an opportunity to do. And we just put $1.8 million in the pickleball because of economic development, and we should have, it's an incredible opportunity. $28,000 to try to keep a couple hundred kids off the street seems like just as wise an investment--
Amen.
--to me. We've got a number of folks who want to speak to it. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, Mayor, I've been reading, let me first, Ms. Callahan, are you, are you employed by the Golf Authority?
I'm on the Golf Authority, I'm not--
Are you employed?
Part?
Are you employed by the Golf Authority?
I'm sorry.
No.
I know you're on the Golf Authority, are you employed by the Golf Authority?
Am I employed?
Yes.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
You're not employed by the Golf Authority, right?
No, sir.
Okay, that's the question, that's just, okay. Look, I've been reading bits and pieces of things, and I feel like we're meddling in the Authority's business from how they conduct business and do business here at the table, and it makes me a little uncomfortable, I'm a little sensitive. I just want to tell you, I don't think I'm ready to have this conversation today, and because I'm a little concerned, a little sensitive about the current structure and how business is being conducted, and those involved and requests being made. And I'm, I think that it's going to take a little time to understand that for me, this is new to me, but I just got to tell you, I'm a little sensitive to that, knowing what we've done. The Authority, in the last several years, has done an outstanding job.
That's right.
And we've employed them to manage our golf courses. Contractually, there's some questions. Today, who has authority over Goblin Creek is a question mark, it's a big question mark if there's, well, I'm just saying it's a question mark if there's no lease, but I'm not sure yet, I haven't, I haven't worked through that.
Yeah, they, let me say real quickly--
Let me just finish, Mr. City Attorney, I'm very sensitive to the request that's being presented to the Council, because I feel like it's still, at this current point, an Authority matter, and that they should reconcile it and fix it, whatever that is. But I think there's a lot of other things that need to be fixed, and that's what I'm saying, is that I'm a little uncomfortable where we're at today without understanding the whole equation, and that's where I am.
All right, Counselor Tucker.
Yes, I actually wasn't included on that email traffic, I appreciate, I think it was our City Attorney that had provided some information in reference to that. But you gave two options, and I think the second option was, it said something in reference to the Golf Authority, City Attorney?
There's a couple of things you can do, that, right now, the Golf Authority has jurisdiction over the operation of Goblin Creek. Now, you can either allocate some money into the general fund budget for Goblin Creek, or leave it as is, which I think it was reallocated into another line account.
So what was it that Mr. Jim requested in reference to the budget?
Ms. Alexander, you've got that.
So on the add-delete list, there was a reallocation of 50, $57,980 to add one full-time marketing manager. This, of course, was accomplished by, it was a budget-neutral adjustment, it was accomplished by deleting the funding that was in that particular call center for Goblin Creek, by deleting, requested part-time maintenance intern, and then making some other operating adjustments to facilitate the full-time marketing manager.
Okay, so the way it's structured right now, the Golf Authority has all three golf courses, is that how? So my question really would be, I understand that we don't have a lease, but what would really be the problem, since we have hired someone to basically manage our golf, a golf authority of golf courses? I'm just, I'm just asking, because he's done a great job over the last three years, and if this was something that he presented, being the person that's over it, I'm just trying to see, in what capacity, and Ms. Callahan, are you actually coming? Are you coming as the Golf Authority? Are you coming as yourself? Are you coming as Four Kids? Like, who are you representing in your request? And also, what is it that Mr. Jim sees as being a need for the golf?
So initially, like I said, I'm here because I'm on the Golf Authority, and any decisions, once I was asked to be on the Budget Committee, we submitted the budget, when that budget came back for any edits, the Budget Committee was not informed, and the Golf Authority was not informed. It was just something that he decided to do, understanding, we were told at the next Golf Authority meeting, that there was no time to discuss it, that's why he had to say, I want a marketing manager instead of Goblin Creek getting any money, and the maintenance person. That's the Golf Authority position that I'm at.
Okay, so you're the co-chair?
I am the co-chair, yes.
Who's the chair?
Ricky Wright.
Okay.
My name's Ricky Wright, I live in Marlowe Drive, in Columbus. The Golf Authority has never, we've always worked under the policy, and we thought it was the city policy, that we could not use money from one course to pay for another. When we sent this budget, when we were asked by Four Kids to submit a budget for Goblin Creek for them, we did. Finance says, no money, you can't have a budget. And then they said, but you could do it under Bull Creek. For us, we should have caught that right then, that's our fault. We're good at promoting golf, we're not real good at budgeting. But we never had the intention of taking money that was raised at Bull Creek to spend on Goblin. We've always, they lease it for a dollar a year, they've always run it, they take care of it, they do all that. They will, when we do a budget, we have a Budget Committee that helps Jim to, as Jim submits, and says, what do y'all think about this, that? We don't bring that back, we don't look at that budget. But where we look at the budget, we send it in. When it got adjusted by Finance and took out our marketing person that we need to do a couple of things. One is to promote Bull Creek around other than the city. We can bring people in. We've got a marvelous golf course, and when it was built, it was one of the top 25 public courses in the country. We're working now, Glenn, on having a master plan done of hiring, we've got an RFP, working now, where we will hire an architect to do a master plan for all three, Bull Creek, Oxbow, and Goblin Creek. So we'll have a roadmap. So when we have, and we do have a surplus, and y'all understand where we were four years ago, y'all were spending $200,000 a year to support golf. The last two years, you've saved $400,000, $200 each year, because we've done what we've done, and Jim's at the job Jim's done. But we don't, we don't, even though we got it up there, we're in our 40th year of irrigation, that's going to hit, and when it does, it's probably going to cost about a million dollars on each side. So we know that's coming. Our greens, we're in about the 25th year, the grass will last between 25 and 40 years before it starts mutating, and then you can't play golf on it, you got to replace it. That's, that's at least another 2,000, 2 million on each side. That's coming, we know it's down the road. So we're not spending money frivolously, we're not just allocating, and we're certainly not allocating for, and we're not fussing at Four Kids, they do a great job. But we're not taking Bull Creek money to let, for their charity, is what I'm saying. Now, if y'all want to give them the money, we think that's a wonderful idea, they do a great job. But we don't, the Golf Authority is not going to spend money that's raised at Bull Creek to Goblin Creek. Now, if you want us to run Goblin Creek, we'll get together, we'll figure it out. Jim doesn't work for seven hours a week, we can put him back, we can just keep him working, so it's not a problem, we'll figure it out, we'll run Goblin Creek. Or we'll come to you and say it's not worth it, close it down. But right now, we're not, I'm just telling you, we never would approve spending Bull Creek money for Goblin Creek, unless we're running it. And then we wouldn't get the income, and then we wouldn't need, we'd go from there. So, I mean, that's the Golf Authority's position. And as far as changing, Jim caught the, in the add and delete, Jim caught that today. You know, the Finance adjusted our budget, I said, no, they can't do that. And we just thought you couldn't do it anyway, because we didn't think you could take money from one golf course and pay for another. We've always-- We've always been under that assumption. I'll start my eighth year in July on the Golf Authority. It's always been that way. The money that, that golf course raises is spent on that golf course. So, um, that's just the way we stand.
In, in my understanding, there's two enterprise funds. One is Oxbow Creek, one is Bull Creek, and the Godwin Creek was never an op, uh, an enterprise fund that I can remember. Was it? Because, because it was always typically operated by charitable organizations, whether it was First Tee, Seniors for Kids, or now Four Kids. But it's, it's always, it was put underneath the Authority. But, um, yeah, it kind of, it kind of operated off on its own, kind of out of sight, out of mind. If the volunteers were able to keep that thing functioning and running, it was no burden, other than maybe sharing some labor, uh, from Bull Creek. So that, I don't, I don't remember if there was ever any money. I was on the Authority years and years ago, uh, and, um, I, I know that Godwin Creek was talked about in the budget because they didn't have any other source of funds.
Mm-hmm. That's correct. And what Mr. Wright said in terms of not crossing funds is absolutely correct. And it is just like you said, Mr. Mayor, um, Bull Creek Golf Course Fund is one fund, Oxbow Creek Golf Course Fund is another fund, and in order to be an enterprise fund, you have to have both revenues and expenses. You cannot have one without the other.
At, at the other one?
I understand that. I mean, I, we used to, I mean, we used to actually kind of oversee that too, but uh, it, it, I'm just saying that Bull Creek used to, years ago, it's been twenty-five years ago, used to put some money towards, it wasn't even Godwin Creek. It was just the par three, Big City Par Three.
I was going to say, um, ma- Mayor and City Attorney, I guess where I was kind of, um, trying to get some understanding clarification is, um, Ordinance Ninety-seven dash thirty-five amended the original Golf Authority Ordinance Number Eighty-two dash twenty-nine to provide that the term golf course or Bull Creek Golf Course included. Bull Creek Golf Course, Fountain City Golf Course, and Oxbow Meadows Golf Course. And then Fountain City later became known as Godwin Creek Golf Course. And because of that, all of it was under the Golf Authority, Golf Authority's jurisdiction. So I was just trying to figure out how all that plays in this budget and the concern with Ms. Callahan.
It's all under the Authority.
So all of it is under the Authority.
That's right. It's under their jurisdiction. And the only thing you've got to decide with respect to this budget is, are you going to allocate anything in addition specifically to Godwin Creek? If you're not, then we can help the Authority get another dollar a year lease, you know, ready, with, where they, uh, pay a dollar a year rent, and maybe some of the proceeds could go back to the, uh, operation. But, you know, the only thing today is, is the budget decision.
Right.
And, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I, I was just, you know, just to keep track. Uh, we are currently at nine million one hundred seventy-six thousand five hundred and eighty dollars in general fund reserve. And that's fifteen point two eight, two eight days of reserve uh, used to fund the three hundred and thirty-six point eight million dollar budget, which is where we are right now. And that leaves a hundred and nine point seven five days of reserve. Just to keep track.
After, after you speak, I, I wanted, um, Mr. Jim to, um, just give some insight in reference to, um, possi, since he has jurisdiction currently over all three locations, you know, what are the needs and, you know, just comments from, from Jim. I think he'll be more you know, okay.
Ms. Callahan.
Okay. Um, I, again, I think very highly of, of Jim. We've worked with him. Um, when we hired him, we were excited to see the budget go in the right direction. It was one of the reasons why I wanted to join the Golf Authority officially, because I didn't want to see the game of golf lost on our youth or the city. Um, so I applaud all his efforts and everything that the Golf Authority and himself have done to direct the budget in the right way. I'd like to add that, um, because we do oversee the youth golf, because, um, some of the longer courses don't appreciate kids on the courses. But some of those events that I mentioned, the middle school tournaments, these kids playing practice rounds, the parents getting the, uh, carts and things of that nature, also helped get that budget in a better light. Um, it didn't completely get that hundred and thirty-five thousand in reserve that we have, but I think that the return of investment, again, is obvious when you're helping these kids learn, like you said, something they might never get an opportunity to, providing them those tools, and they love it. We're able to scholarship those kids to those programs through our charity. So again, to reiterate, the monies that we're asking for for Godwin Creek is just for the golf course maintenance. It can be paid out on receipts that we pay bills, because currently that's what we do, is we pay the vendors that Bull Creek and Oxbow uses for those supplies. We could literally reimburse up to that amount to show you that we're only using it for that. That would allow us to continue to help those kids get scholarship into our programs and get the clubs and through the summer camps. Again, like you said, to help ki- kids happy as being a kid and safe at a, at a course that, like you said, is a hidden jewel that not many know about.
Yes, ma'am. Well, we've, right, a- as of yet, we've had nobody from Council who was interested in putting that on the, uh, making amendment of the budget that. Mr. Art, did you have something?
Yes, um, I just wanted to address what Counsel Tucker was saying. So, um, first of all, uh, on the record, I love Godwin Creek. I love junior golf, and, uh, and I couldn't care anymore about supporting it. So, uh, just to be clear on that. Why I came to, um, to add, delete, I think I need to share with you. Um, I came to the add, delete session because I was, I was doing my job, and not because I had any ill will toward anybody or any golf course or anything like that. The, um, uh, the Golf Authority had never discussed transferring, uh, dollars from either Bull Creek or Oxbow Creek to Godwin Creek. There'd never been a discussion. Um, I was charged with requesting fifty thousand dollars for Godwin Creek. And I tried to do that. It wasn't, the means to do that was not available, but then I was presented with, well, you can do it through Bull Creek. So I was hoping that, uh, Ms. Callahan knew something more than what I knew, so I did submit it through Bull Creek. Um, I see now that was probably a mistake, but it was the only way I could get it on the table. Um, so I did put it on the table. The Golf Authority did not ask me to do that. They asked me to do it another way. I could not do it that way. So I tried, and, uh, and it came back, uh, a portion of it came back, and that's when I was like, you know, there's a problem here, because now there's a budget that's been sent back to me with funds for Godwin Creek that the Golf Authority never did approve. So I was just trying to set the record straight. The marketing manager had been approved. I, you know, it's in the minutes. Uh, it had been, uh, approved and discussed by the Golf Authority, and it was originally submitted, so it didn't just come out of thin air. The marketing manager did not. So anyway, um, as far as our needs go, this October, uh, I am, and maybe November by the time you guys get it, but there will be a presentation later this year. I'm very proud to be able to offer this to you, where you all will see what, uh, your golf facilities truly are, what their needs truly are. Uh, I, I think that, uh, you'll see that you have something pretty special, but also with some age. Uh, and when I did get it four years ago, we had a lot of equipment needs. We were in a big equipment hole. It looked to me like we had gone one more year, ten or fifteen years on our equipment. And, uh, so we have, that's been our priority, digging out of the equipment hole. We have done it. Now we're investing more in our golf courses with fertilizers and weed killers and making conditions better, and it's working. People are coming, we're, our traffic is at an all-time high. Citizens are enjoying the golf courses more than ever. Our revenues are, I know Bull Creek revenues are going to be nearly a million dollars more than they were four years ago. So what we're doing is working, and, uh, and our, our needs are, we still have needs. We're, we're not finished. We're staring a major, a renovation in the face. And, um, anyway, I'll, I'll have a more formal presentation to make for you, but that's, that's how I see it right now.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Counsel Crabbe?
I went over to Godwin Creek yesterday, and it's, it's in very nice condition. I would say equal to, you know, s- some of our other golf positions, but, um, I don't see any way that we could, um, use city funds to fund the maintenance of Godwin Creek if the Golf Authority is not taking in any funds from Godwin Creek. It's been said a couple times now that that's what, um, is an enterprise zone. I don't think, right now, there's anything that the Council, um, can or will do. I think we have to put it back over into the Golf Authority's hands to negotiate a new lease. And, um, I can't believe that we've been, um, without a lease for as long as we've been without a lease. Um, so that means, if, if you guys, I'm, I'm not telling you what to do. You guys decide what you want to do, if you want to sign a new lease, or if you want to go in a different direction. But that should be a pretty high priority right there if you're going to re-sign a new lease, because, um, there's some things that I've read in this lease that, um, it sounds as though you're just going through with the lease, although, um, you have, you know, it's, it's not in effect. And then I have a feeling that there's some things that haven't been done in a long time, so, um, that's, that's what, that's where my stance is today.
Thank you. All right, that's all the comments, and again, there's been no motion by this Council to amend the budget. Well, it, it probably ought to be asked of the City Attorney and/or the Golf Authority, since those will be the parties to work with it. We'll- I'm sure he'll be glad to talk to you. Yeah, he'll talk to you.
Glad to die.
Thank you.
Mayor, next item is the non-operating budget for FY twenty-four. This is on first reading. These are funds, um, such as the ARC, American Rescue Plan Fund Budget, uh, Hotel Motel Tax Fund, and others. Ms. Alexander's here, if there are any questions. All right. We'll vote on that item next week. I'm going to call the next four ordinances together. These are the Pension Plan Contributions for General Government and Public Safety Plan, the Disability Income Plan, and the Death Benefit Escrow Plan. These are brought every year. Are there any questions on that?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll bring that back for a vote next week. And we've got the garbage collection, uh, offset for low-income households. This is also an annual ordinance. Any questions on that?
No.
All right. Uh, you should have around the table a map for possible use by personal transportation vehicles. This is on first reading, would add certain streets. Now, the color map that's been distributed also does include a crossing of Veterans Parkway uh, to get to an area around Fifth and Sixth Avenue. And if, if Council decides to go with that configuration, including the area across Veterans Parkway, then we'll need a short amendment to the ordinance itself, but it's, it's up for discussion right now with the Council.
Doesn't appear to be any questions. Uh, Mayor Prokem?
Thank you. Um, I still have some concerns about allowing vehicles to cross veterans. Um, and the, the other concern I have with the, the map is, or are, the, um, allowing the transportation of the vehicles all the way down to veterans with all the streets listed down, all the way down to Victory Drive. My, my recommendation would be to stop it at the block before that, so, just not to tempt someone to go on down to veterans. If the, if the road, roadways are allowing traffic to veterans all along that corridor of veterans to Victory Drive, then folks are going to be tempted to cross at each intersection. And so you're, you're not going to have anyone policing that area to, uh, on a daily basis, and if, if someone gets injured, um, and we've allowed it, I, I think someone could argue pretty clear that, that you're allowing them to go to it. But a- anyway, there's, there's just some situations there that I think we could avoid. I, I would hope that we could amend the map to do something like that. It is, is the proponent open to an amendment?
Counsel Koga?
The, the red is what is already in place. That's been in place for a long period of time, I believe. Um, I, correct, I'm not sure how long the original leases or ordinance has been in place, but, um, I mean, as of today, there's not a whole lot of issue with anybody crossing veterans right there. You do have a, um, a fair amount of, uh, residential that is on Third, those cross streets. But it's not really causing too many problems or any problems right now. Uh, and then I think if we're looking at the cross street of, on Fourteenth, uh, crossing veterans, that does parallel, um, the Dragonfly Trail right there, so, I mean, if, if we're crossing veterans, that would be the, the natural and logical location. I do think we need to kind of look at, uh, the, in the future of what we're trying to accomplish as a city, and so, um, connecting those two, those two, uh, neighborhoods, so to speak, not necessarily neighborhoods, but those two, um, I don't know what you would call them. Portions of the, we'll call them ne- neighborhoods, those neighborhoods like Swift Mills, um, Fetch over there, and then Uptown, especially if we're talking about WeGo and, um, and building up that footprint. Uh, this is going to be fairly important. I, I don't, I, currently, the cross streets that go to veterans don't pose any problems, um, right now. Um, I do think if you take those away, you're taking away a lot of residential, people who have golf carts over there as well, or PTVs other.
Okay, so the new?
The new is in blue.
Is the blue.
Yeah, the red is pre-existing.
Yeah, the blues, the blue on the map would be the new additions in this ordinance, and, uh, of course, the only, only one crossing veterans would be that Fifth, Sixth area at the top.
Right. And I, I mean, I'm not sure why, and I, and I think staff has, has said too, they're not really, we're not really sure why. Second and, um, Chapel right there have been left out. This, I mean, very similar to the rest of, um, I, I guess I, I guess it could be argued that it was left out because that's where Second Street enters into residential, but, um, but that's, I mean, Second Avenue right there is about the same traffic load as Third. Oh, you got dark. Um, but the, the, the other part, going, uh, on Fourteenth Street, and then coming behind Highside Market, uh, there on Third, before you see on Veterans, and then going across Veterans on Fetch, uh, to Fetch and to the new development over there. Um, this is going to be fairly important in connecting those two districts.
And then let me say one more thing, Mayor. Um, I'll just read it into the record. If you go with the veterans crossing, as far as allowing it on the map, this new language would, would be added to the ordinance. PTVs shall not be driven on Veterans Parkway. However, they may cross Veterans Parkway at its intersection with Fifteenth Street in accordance with all traffic regulations. Uh, W eleven eleven warning signs, as specified in the manual traffic control devices, shall be installed at all intersections where PTVs are permitted to cross state routes in both directions in advance of the crossing. So.
Okay.
That's the Council decision to make today.
Counsel Thomas? Counselor Thomas?
I'm going to renew my concerns about crossing veterans there. I don't have a problem with from, that would be Broadway, down to Veterans on Fifteenth, is that Fifteenth, the blue there?
I think it's Fifteenth or Fourteenth.
Is it Fourteenth?
Is it Fourteenth?
I think it is.
Well, I don't have a problem with going there as, yeah, it's Fourteenth, because you can't do Thirteenth. Going there on Fourteenth, as you can on Twelfth, down through Fourth. But I do have a problem, I do have a real concern about crossing veterans. And I would, I don't know that it is necessary at this point to do that. We're talking about, as I recall from our last discussion on this, there are only 24 golf carts that are licensed in the Uptown area, in the historic district and so forth. And I just, if and when it becomes more, there become more carts there and so forth, we can always revisit it. But I would, I would propose that this map be amended to delete the crossing at Veterans and Fourteenth, down to Sixth, that entire area.
All right, that's a motion?
Yes.
All right, there's a motion to eliminate the stated routes that Counselor Thomas just mentioned. Is there a second to that? All right, Dyes for lack of a second?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. All right, any more questions or comments about the proposed routes?
All right, well, this. Okay, well, as it's on the table, then, we'll have the entire section, including the crossing of veterans at the top there, Fifteenth or Fourteenth, whatever street that is. And then the PTV language I read into the record will also be in the ordinance. So we'll bring that back for a vote next week.
Okay.
All right, Mayor, that's all the ordinances we had on the table. The resolutions, the first one up involves a development authority bond issue to finance facilities at Magnolia Manor. Let me get the right name. This is the Magnolia Manor, the Lodge at Magnolia Manor LLC. And their bond counsel, Mr. Jerry Peterson, is here. This, the reason they have to come to council for approval of this issue is because the bonds are going to be tax exempt. Y'all have seen this kind of thing in the past, when there've been other hospital projects, hospital authority projects. But this is a private entity going to the Development Authority for issuance of these bonds. And it is ready for adoption.
Motion and a second to approve item 14. Any discussion? All right, we do have six here. All those in favor, well, we can cue it. Counselors, register your votes. All right, that's all seven. Counselor Huff votes affirmative. Thank you for your patience, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, for your patience. That has passed. All right, got a motion to reconsider Resolution 18723, adopted May 23rd, on the parking fees in the city garage. This motion made by Counselor Davis, up for any discussion? Or you can take a vote?
All right, so there's a motion to rescind that and a second. All right, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
All right, that has been writ.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry. Counselor Davis?
I just want to add to it. It doesn't exclude, I think what's most likely going to happen, Mayor, if you agree, that we're going to come back and relook at this and maybe formulate something that's across the board and start from scratch for everybody. I don't, I mean.
I think you can do it administratively.
I'm not jumping out there, but that's what I envision.
I think you could do this administratively. I think if there's an issue or something that pops up, the city manager's office can reach out to council to get their feelings on it and then act on it then. Because this is not something that's going to go back and forth very often, I wouldn't think. So whatever you want to do, it's fine. Yeah, it's rescinded, yes, sir. Counselor Tucker?
Yes, I wanted to inquire about the parking fees. I know we had mentioned having a no cash option. That way, we can kind of track the parking fees.
We can?
I don't know, like, you know, when you go up to the Capitol, how they have those, it's like an app or a thing that you can check.
I don't think we're charging anywhere right now, so, I mean, but that, I agree with you.
No, I'm just saying, when we do revisit it, if we can look at a cashless system.
And, you know, I think periodically, we're going to be revisiting parking, particularly, parking, particularly as it deals with Uptown, because it's just, it's so scarce. And I had two or three individuals in a meeting, they were all running businesses in Uptown. They wanted the meters and to try to migrate people. And we don't know how it'll change patterns, anyway, when we get the kind of on-demand shuttle running in the Uptown area. So that could be, that could be something that influences how it's done. But regardless, I agree with you. As we look at ways to start collecting money in those, we need to automate it so we don't have to have a person sitting there.
Thank you.
Okay, we're through with that item?
Yes, sir.
The last resolution item we have is a request by Counselor Davis to amend the grant management policy of the Finance Department. And this would provide one more layer of possible audit by the internal auditor, only if approved by the council, for any grantee or sub-grantee receiving city funds, state pass-through, or federal pass-through funds. But it's ready for any discussion.
Look, can I ask a question? Is this to audit all of their books, or audit just the utilization of this money? Because I can see a lot of organizations that are not going to want you to take a look at their funds.
Well, that's a good question, Mayor. I think what it is, it's financial accounting best practices is what it is. It's just a matter of when you, when you're dealing with taxpayer funds and you're handing out taxpayer funds, it's no different than federal government, state government, what we do. It just puts it in writing that anybody that requests money, grants, both operating or non-operating type grants, that they produce the audited reports, they produce their financial statements, they produce their operating budgets, which we should require that regardless. That's just due diligence, it's best practices. And then knowing that at any time, once they produce that, if it's all matches up and it approves, then we can move forward. But if at any time, a council member or anybody is concerned about the operations of an entity at any point, then our auditor or our financial department has the ability to go in and take a look at the books to make sure everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing. Like I said, it's financial accountability.
With regards to just those funds, though.
Right, well, with regard, yes, those funds, yes. It's a best practice management with those funds. That's correct. If it's determined that an organization or anybody is not using those grants appropriately, or they're not in compliance, whether it's IRS rules, whether it's state funding rules, whether it's fraudulent-type activity, anything like that, we just went through a couple of cases where we realized after the fact. But this is just a practice that supports the Department of Finances, that supports, shows that we're being accountable with taxpayer dollars, we're doing the right thing, and that we demand accountability back when we give it out, that everybody's doing the right thing. And we can have confidence at the end of the day that they're doing it. If you don't have that ability to, whether it could be even a whistleblower matter, if you don't have that ability to look at the finances, you'll never know. It's just, you know, you have to take their word for it, and that's not a good practice. So it's something that we've talked about for a long time. We just exercised it in some contracts and.
I'm okay with it, I just was curious, wanted to make sure it was limited to the funds.
Yeah, okay.
I think it could inhibit some people from applying for.
I don't think so. I think they just have to produce the proper documents.
To the mayor's concern about, does it inhibit anyone? And also knowing the internal auditor already has a lot on their plate, have we looked at third-party systems? I know, like, we used to use rapid ratings, and so we would just, you can submit your financials to the third-party rapid ratings, and then they provide an answer to whoever wants to do the due diligence. And so, one, it's less work to request the information. And, two, whoever's having the information requested, they know that it's, the level of questions are appropriate, and they know that it's confidential because they're providing it to that third party, whose sole purpose is to provide an assessment of your financial stability. So I guess a short question is, have we looked at, have we looked at allowing a third party to take this function rather than putting it on the internal auditor?
Oh, yeah. Counselor Davis?
It's not on the auditor, it's across the board. It's finance, it's whoever's handling the money and whoever's requesting the money, whichever department it's coming from. It's just producing the proper documents, making sure every, the finances are in line. So when we cut a check, we feel good about it. And then at the end of the day, everybody's maintaining their proper status. And that, you know, we have the ability, whether on an annual basis or at any time, we can take a look at the books, that's all it is. It's not a third party, there's no third party involved. It's a policy, is what it is. It's just an amendment to the policy that states, everybody knows upfront what the rules are, and you should abide by it. Like I said, it's, it should be standard best practices when it comes to financial accountability. It just supports our finance department and what they do, whether community reinvestment or other entities, crime prevention, they already do it. We actually wrote, Counselor Thomas, we put the bylaws together, that they have an accountability mechanism, they're already doing it. So we're just putting it in writing, a little more spelled out, that this is our policy as we move forward with. We're getting a lot of requests now for funding that we never have in the past. And it's just a way to make sure the state does it, the federal government does it, we should do it as well.
Okay, Mayor Prokem?
I would like to offer an amendment to the amendment. Just basically trying to tie down that the audit is aimed at the funds received.
Why don't you put in, subject to audit of grant funding, of grant funds, by the internal auditor?
I was going to put, after, in the last line, it says, will be subject to audit of funds as described above.
That's fine, that's the grant funds.
Yeah.
Of funds as described above.
Yeah, either way, either way is fine.
So is that a?
That's a motion.
A motion to amend, is there a second? All right, a second to amend. Counselor Crabbe to the motion on the amendment? Is that your question to the amendment?
So what about expenditures? I mean, it's not just the money coming in, it's, you want to see the big picture.
That's what an audit is.
Yep, it's just limiting it to the money that came from the grant.
Oh, I see, okay, that makes sense, okay.
Okay, all right, no further questions regarding the amendment? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, and I think there was already a motion on the floor to approve item 16.
As amended.
Any, as amended, any discussion on that item? All right, hearing none, you can cue it, Chris, and we'll let them. Okay, and that passes. It's better.
Okay, that's our last business item, Mayor. We didn't need a short, much shorter executive session.
Yeah, I promise.
On real estate acquisition and disposal, that's all we've got.
Okay, move the public agenda. Each individual will have five minutes to share their thoughts. And if they can't complete within the five minutes, we'll give them an additional three minutes at the end of the clerk's agenda. Please just start with your name and your address. We'll start with Mr. Carter, Mr. Rickett Carter, Sr., regarding his experience with being a former businessperson in Columbus.
My name is Rickett Carter. My address is 2113 Seventh Street, Columbus, Georgia. Before I can get started on what my topic was, I ran into some problems at the clerk office on the topic that I had came before. Over 60 days, we were abiding by the rules and regulations of the council, that you have to wait 60 days to come back.
Yes, sir, and that is a procedure in place that was approved by council. And we rely on the clerk. And she tells me that you have spoken within 60 days on that topic. I'll have to cut you off.
Excuse me now, excuse me now, see, I only have five minutes.
Yes, sir, and it's ticking.
You just cut me off a minute ago.
Well, I'm just trying to answer your question.
Well, okay. I feel like my constitutional rights was infringed on when I went down to put in the application to come back before council. Now.
Sir, you'll need to speak on the topic you signed up for, which was as a businessman.
Well, Mr. Mayor, now, see, is you're not giving me a chance to get my point across. I mean, I'm going to get to it if I have time. But see, I guess you're running the clock out on me now.
It's been running, yes, sir.
So now, I'll say this right here.
Yes, sir.
The Constitution states that I have a freedom of speech, which I feel like has been infringed on. And now, you're not being fair because you don't want to have this discussion. When I first came down to this council, I didn't come down here for this. I came down to ask for an investigation.
Yes, sir, and you're covering information that you covered within 60 days, and you're not allowed to do that.
But see, I didn't cover it, I didn't revisit that information, that request that I asked for, Mr. Mayor.
Sir, I'm trying to help you stay on task so that you're able to explain to us what you want to explain today.
I am going to stay on task. But by the same token, I still ran into a problem trying to even get before this council. See, a long time ago, in history, states that the reason why they put this constitution in place was to assure Negroes that we were having the right to be able to speak instead of being Muslim like I'm being now. See, this is 2023 now, and you're trying to Muslim me like master, the slave masters used to Muslim Negroes before. See, now, you practically ran my five minutes out. You tell me what I can say, tell me what I can talk about.
About your experience being a former businessperson in Columbus.
I don't want to talk about that right now.
You signed up for that, sir.
Okay. I don't have to talk about it right now.
No, sir, you don't.
Because, see, right now, is that I feel like you're being totally unfair.
Well, I apologize that you feel that way, that's not my intent.
Like I said before, we voted for you all. We put you all in these jobs. You all work for us, but it seems like it's been turned around now. See, and you refuse me to be able to try to get some kind of clarity on the problems that I ran into. See, so, okay, I'll come back again.
Yes, sir, thank you. Okay, next is Ms. Alice Flat, representing Neighborhood Watch at Biltmore Forest, Council Court, and the inability to remove squatters and neighborhood nuisances.
I'm Alice Flat, with two Ts.
Yes, ma'am.
3900 Council Court, Columbus, Georgia. Our neighborhood consists mainly of 60, 70, and 80-year-old people. Last June, we had police presence everywhere and I thought, what's going on? And all of a sudden, all these cars start coming in, it's like Indianapolis 500. When we inquired about it, we were told a group home was moving into our neighborhood. I said, that's a business? Yes, it's a business. I said, this is a zone residential. He said, well, when these people come out, y'all go back in your house. If you see them outside, you go back in your house. We felt violated, so I started looking into it and I called the police department and asked them if they could do anything about the constant traffic through there, it's like Indianapolis 500. And he said, well, I'll see if I can increase presence of the patrol in that area. Two weeks went by, we didn't even have the coverage we did have. I called again. I talked to Officer Paul Grubb, who is in patrol, he assigns cars. He said, Ms. Flat, I am 104 officers short to patrol this city. They are already a nuisance to me, they're a nuisance to you, there's nothing you can do about it, they have a legal business license. I said, we're zoned residential. It rocked on there, they had one man that kept escaping. Police presence was there daily, sometimes several times a day, EMTs out there every time the police were, the police didn't come, one at a time, they'd come two, three, four. No wonder they were considered nuisance, police department couldn't do anything about them because they had a business license in a residential area. March the 9th, they were evicted by Joe Smith, it's on your record if you want to go back and read everything that happened that day, they were evicted. We're supposed to be at March the 16th. We thought we won the battle, we didn't. They're still there. They were served again June the 7th. I looked up this morning, one of their employees was back in the house. At 9:50 last night, we thought it was all dark, nobody, well, no one had been there Friday. Saturday, one person was let off, went in the house, I don't know when she was picked up, I was gone. Sunday was quiet. Yesterday was quiet. At 9:50 last night, a vehicle comes in, goes in the house, stays 10 minutes, comes back out. We thought they were gone. It's been a problem for us, there's not a police officer in this town that does not know where Council Court is, there is not an EMT that does not know where Council Court is. They've been there as much as I have this past year. And my question is, the police told me, you've got to go to city council and get their license revoked, although you're zoned residential, they have a business license. Saturday, I found out another person is coming in our community, zoned residential, a bed and breakfast. We don't need that either, we are now 70s and 80s. So how is it a business license being given to people to come in my neighborhood, my family, my people I love, and violate us in the ways we've been violating the past year in a zone residential? We would like answers.
Well, the only thing I can tell you, I'm not sure, do you have the, what is, give us your address, I didn't catch your address.
3900 Council Court.
Okay. Yeah, unfortunately, some of those group homes are licensed by the state, they don't even tell us. If they have below a certain number, they can pop up in any residentially zoned neighborhood and they have frequently. And with regards to the bed and breakfast, we've been struggling with an ordinance to try to at least get an opportunity to know where they are and make sure that they are not, it's like a rental, but make sure they're not harming the neighborhood by being in existence. Counselor Crabbe, did you?
Thank you. Thanks for being here today. Ryan Pruitt is gonna give us an update on the business license aspect of it and hopefully you can fill me in on bed and breakfast because I haven't, this is the first I've heard that a bed and breakfast is going in there. We've been dealing with Council Court for a long time and hopefully that is going to be resolved on June 1st. They did file for the second eviction and so that should be dealt with fairly quickly.
It was delivered to them June 7th.
Right, but there's the process, they have to go through the court system and get, you know, get the writ so that they can set up, set out with the sheriff's department.
So we are familiar with the personal care home that was previously licensed on Council Court, so our zoning ordinances do allow personal care homes type one, which are six or less residents, to be placed. They are permitted use in any residential district, so there's no special process or anything, they come in, they prove that they meet the requirements, there is some additional life safety stuff they have to do through the fire department, they have to get an inspection from the fire marshal's office, but once that's completed, we can issue the certificate of occupancy and they can go get a business license in any residential zone for that use. This particular one does not currently have a business license, so it just happened to be the time for renewal and there were some discrepancies with this particular location, so their business license was not renewed, so they are no longer legally operating. We have notified the state of that and as Counselor Crabbe mentioned, we understand there's an eviction process going on that will ultimately resolve the issue.
And have you notified the, when you notified the state of the situation on Council Court, did you group in any, if they had any other group homes also?
So the state was familiar with the operator and so they were going to kind of do a look at all of their operations around town, that's really up to them.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more thing.
Yes, ma'am.
At least I didn't come wanting any money today.
Pardon?
I didn't come and want any money from y'all.
Mayor Procham? Did you mention the address of the property, where the first, what's the address of the property that we're talking about?
3912 Council Court.
Did you hear it, 3912 Council Court?
Okay, yeah, I had 3900 and I was just making sure it was different, thank you.
I live at 3900.
And if there's an Airbnb in there, I'm sure.
It's coming in 3918.
Okay.
Just call me nosy, I love my neighborhood.
No, 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 they're good neighbors.
I commend you ladies because you stayed on top of this, you were respectful, you were diligent, and all of your neighbors should, you know, just be so happy with everything that you guys have done to restore the calm back into this little cul-de-sac. So, you know, you did the right thing, you know, we need your help, you know, to be the eyes and the ears for us and then contacting us and we were able to take care of it. I'm sure, I'm sorry that it didn't get resolved sooner and I know we have a few more weeks before we can get the sheriff's deputy out there to return the property back to the owner and the management company, but you guys should be very proud of yourself for, you know, what you've been able to accomplish.
I think we should all take our job seriously and look out for our neighbors.
Yes, ma'am. Thank y'all.
I also want to thank Charmaine for helping us, she answered every call I called many times too, as Alice, we all have, and I really, because she's always been there, she always answered my calls anytime, so.
Yes, ma'am, thank y'all.
She's been helping us with this.
Thank you.
Thank y'all, very much.
I have one question, if we should have trouble with Airbnb, who do we contact? Let's start with Charmaine again?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank y'all.
Thank you very much.
All right, and that concludes the public agenda. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I've got several items. First, I've got a portion of right-of-way abandonment for 35th Street.
Motion second to approve the right-of-way abandonment, Counselor Thomas?
City Managers, I understand this, this is, we are abandoning this so that Truth Springs can fence in or put a fence on that property, is that?
That's correct.
Is that what we're doing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, there's a motion second, no more discussion, please cue it, councilors who register your votes. All right, that's approved.
Next, I've got a variance for sidewalk installation at 6018.
Motion and second to approve the sidewalk variance, any discussion? Hearing none, please cue it, councilors who can register your votes. That's approved.
Last week, we had Westfield to come and talk to you and this is an amendment to the M O, memorandum of agreement with Historic Westfield, Inc., to give them a six-month extension.
Motion second to, motion second to approve the extension of Westfield lease, Counselor Davis?
Yeah, Mr. City Manager, if you don't mind, I'd like to, I don't have a problem with working with them until December 31st, but at that point, would you, the amendment would be for you to come back and give us a report and an update?
That's correct, yes.
Let us know what's going on and then at that point, we can determine if we need to go six more months.
Exactly, yes.
That would be my amendment to the mayor, I guess, is that?
Well, I don't, I mean, we would come back to you anyway because it's a six-month and it's going to expire December 31st.
All right, I got your word on that.
Well, yeah, because someone's got to maintain that area and do what needs to be done.
Got you.
And it's, you know, we will definitely have a discussion.
That's all, thank you, sir. All right, Chris, put it on the screen, we had a motion second, councilors who can register your votes. That's approved.
And the next?
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve item four and five, any discussion on either one of those items? Counselor Thomas?
Item four. Mr. City Manager, help me, didn't we fund them, fund the Cure Violence, $500,000 over a five-year period?
It's up to $500,000 and this is not going to be new money, it will be still up to $500,000, it's just, it's an extension.
This is still part of that same $500,000?
Yes.
Yes.
And do you recall, and maybe Deputy City Manager Hodge recalls, when did we first approve that? What is the time period? How much time do they have left on that five years?
The original agreement expires June 30th and so they've requested.
Of this year?
Yes, ma'am, an extension and so we've extended it through March of '24.
So we originally did this in 2018?
No.
No, it was for three years.
It was a five-year agreement.
It was for three years.
And they had a delay in hiring their personnel, so we, they've requested that we extend the agreement and so we have amended the performance basis to allow that extension through March of '24. It's the same fund, it's not additional funding.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page here, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any further, Counselor Crabbe, is this to?
Thank you. So how much have we given to Cure Violence total?
200 to date.
200, including this amount?
200 out of the 500,000.
Okay.
And so we have adjusted the timeline and the performance basis in the agreement. They have a reporting requirement to meet certain standards and so that was originally set to expire June 30th and we've extended those performances to expire March 31st of '24, same 500,000, same requirements that they would have to meet, we've just kind of extended it because there was a delay in them hiring their personnel.
Okay. And then I have some questions about the United Way of the Chattahoochee Valley. Have they given us their plan on how they plan to reduce poverty?
So I think they're here, if you would like to hear from them, they're here to address any questions.
I would like to know that.
All right, we need a substitute motion to do four only, I guess.
Yeah.
All right, is that, and a second, all those in favor of item four? Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, was, to item four? Okay. Yes, sir.
Just, Mr. City Manager, with these requests, it just, you know, I'm late to the party, okay, but it just seems like there's been some media coverage lately that's kind of, you know, you can take it any way you want to, but it sometimes puts us as a council, could put us in a compromising situation. I just want to make sure that you, as the executive management side, is keeping an eye on these things and that you're not going to get us in a situation where the citizens are asking us questions, how we're conducting business or doing business or getting involved with people. I just want to make sure that you're on top of it and we trust you of that. I don't have enough information at this point, but I know I'm being asked to make some decisions.
So you're speaking of Cure Violence or Poverty?
Well, actually, actually both of them, it's come to my attention, but like I said, I don't have enough information to speak logically on it, but I just don't want to get caught in a situation, but I do know that they're being put before us today and we're asked to make a decision, that's all I want to say. And I'm okay with that.
Yeah, and that's fine.
I trust that you're going to keep us out of trouble.
Yeah, got you.
Okay.
So for the first one, we're asking for an extension, same agreement, no new money and we're going to hold them to the agreement, so in terms of that, yes, you know, we're responsible. And where poverty's are, we are going to have an agreement with them, they are here and, and of course, I think we all know and that United Way is a very trusted agency in this community and the Chattahoochee Valley and no doubt that they will have an agreement and we're going to hold them to the agreement as well, so they have a record to operate on and they're going to do what they commit to doing.
Okay, thank you.
So if there are any specific questions, we've got Belva Dorsey here.
Well, it's two item four, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
And so, did you want to hear from them or?
Yes.
Yes, okay, would you come forward, introduce yourself?
Counselor, excuse me, Counselor Tucker wants to.
Yeah, before they speak, I think it's important to talk about the funding source for these two projects.
Yes.
The American Rescue Plan, you know, dollars. It's not, it's grant dollars. We're basically being the sub, I guess they're being the sub grantee. So it's not coming from, in reference to Cure Violence, I know when we initially met, I think we were, we were at the Trade Center when we first heard from Cure Violence?
We were in, during COVID.
Yeah, it was either Trade Center or Civic Center, but, you know, initially we discussed doing funds out of Olas dollars and I wanted to make sure that we clarify that the Cure Violence.
That's correct.
Funding source is American Rescue Plan dollars, which are grant dollars that were afforded to us and also with the Poverty Reduction Initiative is through grant dollars that were afforded to us and it's to address issues that basically exacerbated during the COVID crisis. So this was actually one of your initiatives, Mayor, if I was correct, with this Poverty Reduction Initiative and it's just taken a while for us to, I know Deputy City Manager Lisa, not Lisa, Pam, I'm looking at you and saying Lisa, but Pam has met with United Way. Pam has met with United Way several times, and they have devised an extensive plan, and also I think you went through their budget and just everything, and I, I, Pam, don't take this wrong, but Pam is a bulldog when it comes to our, she's very strict on the budget, dealing with United Way. I know it was a lengthy process, but I just want to key in, these are American Rescue Plan dollars. They're not coming out of our general fund or any city funding.
That's correct.
Just to add, just to add to that, so the agreement is a sub-recipient agreement, so it does pass along the responsibility that we have as the city with the American Rescue Plan to the sub-recipient. So that's why the agreement is very lengthy, because there's a lot of boxes you have to check, a lot of reporting requirements for American Rescue Plan, and so this passes those requirements on to the sub-recipient, and so we're, you know, very careful about who those sub-recipients are and to make sure that they're organizations that are used to getting grants and can meet the standards required, especially with this particular funding source.
And, and we're very, as you know, careful with all grant dollars, but in recent months, you know, we, with ARP dollars, you got to be extra careful. You know what we just went through with the, the state on the small business loan, so I, I mean, we, to, back to Counselor Davis, you know, we got to check all the boxes, and we know even in recent months, as we've talked to you about CDBG Home, if you don't sign one form, it could cost you hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, just because you didn't sign a form that you should have signed, and so we're very careful, but we do have them here, and they'll introduce themselves and, and answer any questions that you may have.
Good afternoon. I'm Belva Dorsey, and I am a representative of the Chattahoochee Valley Poverty Reduction Coalition. I'm also the CEO for Enrichment Services Program, so I'm not representing United Way, but the reason I'm speaking first is because several months ago, we came before the council to present information from the Chattahoochee Poverty Reduction Coalition, and one of the priorities that we presented was that there needed to be someone who was hired to address poverty in our community every day. Currently, we have several organizations that are working together and collaborating to address poverty, but we don't have one person waking up every day saying that they are going to reduce poverty in our community. And so the Chattahoochee Valley Poverty Reduction Coalition came and met with City Manager, the Mayor, and others to talk about the need to have one person dedicated to address poverty in our, in our community. I'm sure all of you will agree that the poverty rate is extremely high and unacceptable in our community, and it has a negative impact on all of us. So United Way has developed a plan in collaboration with the Chattahoochee Valley Poverty Reduction Coalition to reduce poverty in our community, and part of that plan, a big part of it again, is hiring a person who will be dedicated to address poverty, and I'm going to let them speak a little bit more about it, but then also bringing together the organizations that are trying to reduce poverty, ensure that our goals are aligned, that our practices are aligned, because the Poverty Reduction Coalition has been doing this work for about three years. But one of the things that we realized is that all of us have other jobs, and none of us can commit our time 100% to this issue, and so again, that's where this role was created. And I'll allow either Jennifer or Erica to talk a little bit more about United Way, but I just wanted to share that, you know, if anybody wants another copy of the presentation that was shared several months ago from the Chattahoochee Valley Poverty Reduction Coalition, we can share it. We answered questions during that time, and I got a sense that most of the council members agreed that something needed to be done to address poverty.
Good afternoon. I'm Erica Cottingham. I'm the Chief Financial and Operating Officer at United Way, and I won't be before you long. What I hear is that you're fiscally concerned that money is being handled correctly. I was, I've been at the United Way for almost two years, and I bring 23 years of managing federal grant and state contracts. That is my background. I've spent the last two years overhauling United Way's financial system so that it can properly account separately for pots of money. We are moving away from an annual workplace campaign structure that funds all of our operations and moving more into specific funds that address issues that are identified in our community. So I want you all to know that United Way is prepared financially to cooperate and, and agree to the terms and conditions. I've built a team of five grant individuals. These people come with national certifications on how to deal with these funds, how to account for them separately, and make sure that the money is used in the way that it's supposed to be used. We are also responsible for those program, programmatic reporting aspects. That means that I can identify where every dollar went, and did it meet the task that it was set out to meet, and so I just want you to know that we are able already to do that. We wanted to build the infrastructure before we started bringing in all of these diversified revenue streams.
Thank you. Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Thank you. So when you mentioned the issues in the commi, the community, do those, do individuals come to you and bring those issues, or do you create issues?
So we're definitely not in the business of creating issues. A lot of these issues are identified by our community leaders, and they're brought to us because we've been identified as leaders in the community that are able to address those needs. For instance, we've been addressing homelessness, which has really ramped up during COVID, and we manage right now about $2 million from the state to provide rental assistance, utility assistance, permanent housing supports. We manage those funds, and I don't know if you know, the state of Georgia adds a lot more restrictions than the federal government adds.
I, I totally agree with the poverty and the homelessness, but I have heard that you're getting into the sexuality of children.
I've not heard that. I've, I haven't heard anything that we've done to deal with
I've heard that you are limiting nonprofits funding if they do not report to you on that.
I, I can't speak to that. I'm strictly financial and contractual, but I've never heard that. I can tell you.
Okay, I just wanted to give you guys the opportunity to speak, speak on that.
I, I mean, that's total, I've never heard that from our organization.
Okay, thank you.
I'll touch on that briefly. I'm Jennifer St. John. I'm Chief Impact Officer at United Way. We really appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit more about the request and to answer any questions that you had, that you have. We have enjoyed a long, terrific partnership with the City of Columbus and so many other partners in our community, and when we come before you, we are representing, we are, sometimes we're the convener of the work, sometimes we are the leader, but we are never doing it by ourselves. We're doing our work in partnership with many other organizations. When Erica spoke on homelessness, we're, our goal in that space is to align all of service providers who are in that space, enabling them to do their best work, but doing it together for a collective purpose with some shared reporting and goals so that we can ultimately see a, a decrease and know that we're measuring it the same way. We'll take some of those same principles. You may say it follows a collective impact model, or it follows a model of community engagement, but we'll take our strong history of working together for the betterment of our overall community. We'll take that strong history and bring it back, harness it in new and different ways, building on best practices that we have locally, that we have, that our partners have, and that we have nationally as well, to identify the best practices to ensure that our dollars, dollars that are invested in United Way are used solely for that purpose of enabling us to be able to come back to you in their future reports and say that we are making a difference in reducing poverty in our community. The goal is bold, a 50% reduction in 10 years. That is a bold goal across any standards, and we also know it is an important and necessary goal for the overall health and well-being of our children, families, and overall community. I realize I did not address your, your, your initial question. I apologize.
That's okay.
This is an issue that we, we're just representing a few folks we are very passionate about, and so our charge would be to make sure that we are putting our passion into fulfilling that purpose and being able to make that difference that the grant dollars are intended for. We do have some requirements for funding. The one that you spoke of is not one of those.
Okay.
We do ask for different types of reporting because we are stewards. Sometimes we are the provider of strategies, and many times with our grant dollars, we are investing those back, and the folks who are funding us are asking for those reporting requirements. So our reporting requirements are those that reflect back what we are being asked to report on.
Okay, so are you being asked to report on that?
On children?
The sexuality of children.
We do, we are asked by some funders on an overall, general basis to report some very general sexual orientation, but it's not broken down by any age and certainly not broken down by children.
Okay, so, so you're doing it because it's the criteria of the organization that has given you the funds to begin with, and so then when you go to turn, turn, take those funds and give them to the nonprofit, this funding source is asking you to, to ask those questions? Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
I'm trying to think of when that question started. There are a variety of demographic questions from race, income, and those are the race, income, gender, disability, sexual orientation. There's a few others, but they're all very county-served, age-served. Those are some general demographic questions that, that we, we collect.
So if the nonprofit did not want to answer some of those questions, then they just wouldn't get funding from that source?
No, they're, they, many, some do not report or collect on that information. There are some areas that, income, for example, is one that we are definitely looking to collect on, but that reporting is something that we're working with our grantees on specifically.
Because those things that make sense to me. The other does not. I don't, I don't see where it fits into funding a nonprofit unless it's, unless the nonprofit is specifically geared towards that, that certain issue, but it doesn't seem like you deal in those issues. You deal more in housing and poverty and probably foods, food insecurities.
Certainly touched on.
And some of the basic things like that.
You've certainly touched on the key issues that we deal with, that we are focused on. Our, our priority areas are around educational equity, economic mobility, and health access. Certainly, the top needs that we see are those areas that you mentioned. We've recently gone back and are relooking at our strategic plan and what we find in each of those conversations, whether we're talking about strategy or priority areas, is that the, the cross-cutting theme across each area, across each issue, across each agency that we support is the ability to support individuals who are living in poverty, particularly underserved and under-resourced in our community. And so if you ask where our focus is, our focus is increasingly, has been, and is taking a new level of increased focus on the area of poverty in our community, and that would be for children, for families, for our community.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your questions.
Counselor Tucker.
Yeah, I wanted to just say something in response to what Counselor Crabbe said in reference to sexual orientation. I know that some grant funding sources do require that question, however, is yes, no, and prefer not to answer, and you don't, when you prefer not to answer, you do not get excluded for not answering yes or no in reference to that question, and it's, it's funny that you ask that, but I just had my VA appointment last Wednesday, and that was one of the questions that appeared on my questionnaire for my check-in at my VA appointment with sexual, well, preference. It's on our VA, so I guess if you have a funding source and they, that's a part of a reporting requirement, they're actually including it, so that was, and they've added Agent Orange, too, but they, they add that now for VA and TRICARE. So sadly, it's, it's reporting requirements that are outside of their purview as United Way, and it's outside of River Road VA is coming from a higher headquarters.
I, I'd just like to add, this, the federal government is asking for this information as well. I just had a meeting with Rob Scott in his office because the CDBG funds for homeless, HUD gives us an option to, for our clients to not disclose, but we didn't have a city option to not disclose, and so we had to work out, how do we handle, do we guess in order to answer HUD's questions, or do we eliminate the data of, of the unknown? And so until everybody else's reporting structure gets on board with what the federal government is requiring of us, there's going to be some gaps in the way we ask questions, and people are going to be uncomfortable with them. I mean, I'm not saying I'm, I'm comfortable with it either, but it's a question that's being asked, and we're, we have to provide that answer to our sponsors.
And with us, we don't want them to come back five years from now, and we didn't check the box, and they say send the money back.
Yep.
I mean, we're, Mayor, we're dealing with another issue as we speak, that we've got to meet with the federal government, I guess, a week from now, and, you know, I mean, they want money, they, they stop your money. Don't check the box. I mean, it's crazy.
All right.
And, and so we have to decide, do you want their money or don't you?
Ladies, thank you. Thank you for what you're doing, too. All right, any other discussion on item five? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Mayor, I've got some purchases. An 18-yard dump truck for Public Works Department asking your approval.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve all the purchases, A through E. Are there, is there one that a council would like pulled for further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? They're approved. Mr. City Manager, if you would run through them, please.
As I said, A is an 18-yard dump truck for Public Works. It's for the Rainwater Division to transport products to and from work sites. I've got a forklift for Engineering Department, and they use this equipment to upload supplies at Traffic Shop and other units as needed. C, I've got a mobile command vehicle for emergency management and homeland security, and this vehicle is a mobile command vehicle, and will have direct link to the Emergency Operations Center as well as state and federal facilities, and we use that during emergencies. Lund maintenance equipment and supplies and for various city departments. And then I've got E, contract extension for integrated transit system for Metro, and I've got F, which did not require a vote, but vehicles for Public Works, Columbus Fire EMS, and one for information technology, and we continue to have supply-demand challenges. Even with the golf carts that we're trying to get for Metro, Mayor, we thought we were going to be able to start that program in Uptown Shuttle in. We thought we would be able to provide it by this month, and now they're telling me the vehicles won't be ready based on supply-demand until November or December, and so we continue to have those challenges so that, you know, and so when we see an opportunity to get vehicles that we do have challenges with, we try and buy them. Those are the purchases, Mayor and Council, and I do have a few updates that we need to do today.
Quick updates, right? Yes, Counselor Thomas.
You leave the, the information-only section?
Sure.
I'm speaking in memory of Counselor Red McDaniel, in case some of our counselors don't remember, that his push on these kinds of purchases was local purchase, buy from local jurisdictions, and Mr. City Manager, I am assuming, as I look at this list and see a couple of them from out-of-town vendors. from out of town vendors, that those were purchased from those out of town vendors because they were not available from an in-town vendor? Is that, is that a correct statement?
That, that is correct. And I see number one from Sun Chevrolet. And I see that number four is from Colum, excuse me, number four is from Hickwater Nissan. And the fifth one, Suns Ford in Auburn, of course, there. But, but yeah, we go to our local lots first and we, you know, and then when we can't, we, we get them where we can get them.
And I know that you know that if you don't, Counselor McDaniel may come haunt you if you don't.
I know, right? You got that right.
If you don't go locally.
And, and I see, looking at some of the other, number nine is from Suns and number 10 from Rivertown Ford. So Columbus is getting quite a bit of business off.
And I, I think it's important, not only for those counselors who may not have served with Counselor McDaniel, but. I think it's important for those counselors who may not have served with Counselor McDaniel and, and the general public to know that we do make a conscientious effort whenever we do this kind of thing, to buy locally. And, and you do that. And I just wanted to make that point so that our local businesses, as well as our local citizens, know that we're buying locally whenever we can.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Manager, I don't know if I've ever asked you this question, imagine that, right? But do we, I know you hear, you heard some of the conversation earlier from the business community, but certainly our businesses and our people doing business here, they pay property taxes, they pay sales taxes, they pay the level of here in Muskogee County. But then other entities from outside work and operate under a different structure as well, which can affect the bids. Do, do we, my question is, do we have something that kind of offsets that? You take a look at that. So it's, it's a level playing field when it comes to our local businesses, that they don't get caught up in a, a structure that penalizes them versus having that opportunity to be on equal, equal grounds?
And so what we've done in the past, if I understand your question, for vehicles on state contract, for example, and this even dates back to when Council Red McDaniel was here. You know, if we, if there's a vehicle on state contract and our local dealership, Ford or whomever, can do, I believe it's two percent or three percent. She's looking it up. But if, if, if the state contract says it's this price, if they, they could get, if they were two percent higher, we'd still go with them.
I, I think I'm talking more about RFPs in general that go out for, out of state contracts.
Yeah, well, we identify and we hope they are registered with the city. And, and we certainly send it to all of the locals when we are going out with a bid or a request or proposal on things.
And you do take a look at that, those all balance kind of aspects to the bids that could.
Well, and, and we only do the.
Could take it out of what I would call a level playing field.
That's right. Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you, Ma'am Proken.
Yes, sir. That's all the comments.
So I've got four updates. The first is the HR director's gonna come and talk about the final employee appeals and the process that we are concluding right now. And we'll be coming back to you soon with, and then we've got three others that we're gonna bring you. They should not be very long. HR Director, Aretha Hollowell.
Thank you, and good afternoon to everyone. As the city manager stated, I want to provide the council with an update and a brief analysis on the final appeals process regarding the new, newly adopted pay plan. So just as a, as an overview with regard to the adopted pay plan, in November of 2022, November 12th of 2022, the new pay plan was adopted by council. And then on January 27th of 2023, employees received the, their new pay adjustments in their paycheck. That was the first time they received that adjustment. And then on March 24th, employees received their retro payment. And the retro payment had to do with a gap between November the 12th and January the 7th, when the pay plan was actually adopted, but then implemented on January the 7th. So that left a four-week gap. And that March 24th is when the employees received that retro payment. So as it relates to the appeals process, once the pay plan was adopted by council, it allowed for a appeal to the consultant, Evergreen consultant. It allowed for an appeal. The employees were allowed to submit appeals. They were reviewed by Evergreen and a determination made. And the results of those appeals were included in the, in the pay plan. There was a final appeal that council approved for employees to appeal to the city manager. That appeal process started on November the 17th, where employees that wanted to appeal received a survey link where they could state what they wanted to appeal as it relates to their pay and their classification. They received it on November the 17th. They were given a soft deadline to submit their appeals by December the 9th. And by December the 9th, most of the appeals that we received were submitted. However, we've continued to receive a few appeals since December the 9th. But the majority of the employees that were interested in appealing submitted their appeals before, by or before December the 9th. So in terms of an analysis of the appeals that were received and submitted, a total of 142 appeals were submitted by employees. Of that 142 appeals that were submitted, 110 of those appeals came from general government employees. And then another 32 of those appeals came from public safety employees. As a review of those appeals, and I'll share more details on this shortly, but again, this was a final appeal to the city manager that council approved. Of those 142 appeals, 52 were approved and 90 denied is not the right word to say after I've looked at this. What happened is the city manager agreed with what the consultant stated and did not make a change. So that was on 90 of those or 63%. So in terms of why the employees submitted appeals, in terms of what they thought should have changed, should have not been changed, or should have been done with regards to their pay and classification, many of them were requesting a change in the class parity methodology that was adopted. And then some employees were requesting more pay due to additional duties and responsibilities. And then some employees were requesting a different pay grade assignment. And some employees were requesting additional pay based on their years of service. And then some were requesting that their pay be adjusted based on their hire date as opposed to their class date. So in terms of the city manager's review of the appeal process, and I know he'll probably want to comment on this, but I'll share this. In terms of his review of the final appeals, there was, as I mentioned, 142 appeals submitted by employees that the city manager reviewed three times. He probably reviewed them more than three times, but I'll say at least three times he reviewed them. After his third review, he met with the HR director and staff to review and discuss those employee appeals again. Then he met with the department heads or elected official for each employee who filed an appeal, an appeal to review and discuss the appeal with that department head or elected official and to share the employee appeal. The actual appeal that the employees submitted was shared with that department head or, or elected official so that they could see what the employees was requesting and why they were requesting it. So a discussion was had with the department head and elected officials regarding the appeal and the proposed recommendation. That was discussed. And none of the department head, after the discussion and review, none of the department heads or elected official disagreed with the proposed recommendation. Following that, following the review, the city manager's review, following the review with human resources, following the, the review with the department head and elected officials, then there was a final review with the actual employee. So a 15-minute session was scheduled with each employee to hear from them and to share with them, or really just to hear from them, why they felt like their job should have been changed, their pay grade, their class, any of those kinds of things were discussed. And a lot, they were allowed to express their concerns about the status of their appeal. And having completed those 142 reviews, then the city, city manager made a recommendation to either approve a change based on the employee's request or to concur with what the consultant had already recommended. Relating to these 142 appeals that were submitted and those that were approved, there is obviously a cost impact to approving appeals. And the cost impact for those appeals that are approved is at $292,037. Now, that cost has been included in the FY '24 recommended budget. I do want to note that this is the cost of those appeals. It does not include any retroactive pay. It includes the cost if these particular appeals are adopted, approved as a part of the amended budget, it does not include any retroactive pay. And so that's all that I have. What I do want, and I know the city manager wants to speak to this.
Well, in, in terms of retroactive, I was gonna say, just looking at the history, you went back to 2006 when we introduced, excuse me, when you, this council approved the last pay plan for this government. And we went through the appeals process, and I think you found that retroactive pay was not applied in that case.
Almost. In the, with the Slaven pay plan that was adopted in 1997, there was no retroactive pay. However, with the UGA pay plan, there was retroactive pay.
Okay.
So one did it and the other one did not. Yes, sir.
Excuse me, Counselor Thomas?
Ms. Hollowell, of the 142 appeals, is that 142 before this second appeal with the city manager and the department chair and the employee? Or was that 142? I guess what I'm trying to find out is after the mayor, after the city manager met with the department head or the elected official and the employee, were any of those 142 overturned? Does that make sense to you?
I'm not.
You had, you had 142 appeals, right, to begin with?
Yes.
And then you met with the department head and the employee. Were, as a result of that, those two meetings, were any additional appeals made?
Yes.
Yes, change.
Change, yes. After hearing from the employee and listening to the employee and what they said actually, in other words, they were being heard in a way that they had never been heard before.
Yeah.
And so after meeting with the department or elected official and meeting with them individually, we did make changes.
Well, I know you said that, that there were 142, and of those 142, originally 50, 52 were approved. So you're saying there, as a result then of these conversations, you approved additional changes?
Well, I think it may have been less than 52. And then by the time we got done, it came to 52.
Correct, yes.
And I'm trying to think of a good example where someone came and made a case and you're like, you know.
Well, I guess, I guess my, the numbers aren't really all that important, Mr. City Manager. My question said, it's really, did, did the meetings with the department heads and the employee result in additional?
Yes.
Approved?
Yeah.
That's, okay.
That's right.
Thank you.
So one of the things I want to, we want to be able to accomplish after having provided this update is to, on next week, the 20th, bring an amended ordinance related to the pay plan that will allow for these 52 appeals to be included in an amended ordinance and bring that before council on the 20th and then be adopted on the 27th is the hope, if council approves, so that we can move forward with these approvals by July 1st. And that ordinance will have more details than what I'm providing here today. It'll have more information about the specific, the specific positions. But that would be the goal for next week, is to bring an amended ordinance to have these appeals approved by council. Because that's what was done previously when we went through the appeals process with the last two pay studies is there was an amended ordinance that allowed for the approval of the, any appeals.
So any questions of the HR director?
No, I, I just, that's probably as thorough a process as I've seen take place, giving people an opportunity to be heard. And there's always gonna be people who are unhappy. I, I get that. There is never a beginning without cutting off somebody. But I, but I think that the process that the city manager's office went through, making sure they can get face to face and listen, I mean, there's really not much more you can do than that. So I think a good job.
Next, Mayor, we've got outdoor park grants received, these are grants received recently by Parks and Rec that we wanted to just share with you. And you probably saw it in the newspaper, but we wanted her to just have an opportunity to share it with you. We have Parks and Rec Director Holly Broder.
Good afternoon. I referenced earlier this morning when we were talking about playgrounds, and some of the information is contained in the presentation today. So good afternoon. Back in November, we applied for a grant through the governor's office. It was called the American Rescue Plan Act, Improving Neighborhood Outcomes in Disproportionate Impacted Communities Grant Program. Really, really long grant. But essentially, it was a grant that was allocated to parks only in, in the state of Georgia, across the state. And at that time, you had to already have your, your, basically your quotes and all of your information. So I, I preface that because we've been asked, why didn't you apply for this area or this district or other opportunities? We were not able to do so. Also, to Counselor Tucker's point earlier, this is also a grant that was based on Census Track. And so we had to apply for projects that fell within the governor's office Census Track information that was provided to us. And that information was also a little bit different than the Census Track information that Mr. Scott and Community Reinvestment, we work with them a lot, that's how we do a lot of our playgrounds, that information was different. So I just wanted to preface that little bit of information before I move forward. But we were very fortunate to be awarded three grants here in Columbus. The money is non-matching money, so this is free money for us that we do not have to allocate any funds to match. The first of which was a playground replacement project. I mentioned earlier, we had requested 3.1, I believe, in our budget. This money will take away from that dollar amount. We were awarded 1.121-807-28. And this will allow us to replace the playground at Boxwood Recreation Center, Charlie Hill, and at Lake Bottom. So all of those will be moving forward. Once the funding is received for us, we'll start to get those replaced pretty quickly. Our timetable is from. Our timetable is from basically within the next few months when we have everything calculated and everything completed to 2026. That's our timeframe in which all of these projects have to be completed, just so you also have that information. Our second grant will be the replacement of A.J. McClung Memorial Lights. That means that all of the poles will be replaced, all of the wiring, all of the bulbs, all the fixtures. So every aspect of the lights that are at A.J. McClung will be replaced. That will also allow us the opportunity to have lighting that is television quality. The lights that we expect are the same that we have at the stadium at South Commons. And if you remember back in 2018, 2019, when we did that, we did those to the caliber so that ESPN could come here and do television. And so we did the same as well for South Commons, I'm sorry, for A.J. McClung, so that we would have the same comparable lighting. And then our last grant that we applied for and we're super excited about is our Bibb City Soccer Field. For those of you not familiar and also for those who are listening at home perhaps, soccer began in the Bibb City here in Columbus before we had Woodrow Farm Soccer. This is where soccer began. For us, this will allow us to completely renovate that soccer complex. The only thing we will not have will be additional lighting, but will allow us to take out the bathrooms, the concession, all of the grass that's there currently, the, I'm sorry, the sprinkler systems, the fencing, everything that's there at that complex and basically to completely replace it. So we're super excited about that. But this grant was awarded in $1,635,761.27. So that will allow us to do that as well. So those were the three grants that we were awarded from the governor's office.
Where is this soccer field?
So this soccer field is in Bibb City. It's adjacent to the Godwin Creek Golf Course. They're side by side. They actually share the same parking lot and oftentimes, sometimes the same restrooms. So this will afford us the opportunity to completely renovate that side of the complex. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you.
And that is my presentation update for grants.
Thank you, Holly. Counselor Tucker?
Thank you. City Manager, I know that you had a list of items for the American Rescue Plan dollars that we had. And I think we just got an update regarding how many businesses receive the grants. And one of the questions that I had is, how much money will we have that will not be extended? Because I know we had to retool some things regarding like the nonprofit, was it nonprofit and tourism?
Yeah, it was nonprofit and tourism.
And tourism?
Yeah.
And the reason why I'm asking, asking, and I wish, you know, we would have thought about this earlier, just leveraging those dollars because they're really the least restrictive funds, even though we have a lot of reporting requirements. I noticed that in other cities, they actually use some of their American Rescue dollars to redo playgrounds. And seeing that we have three that's addressed in, what's that, Governor Kemp's?
ARP.
ARP. If we could possibly look at doing those other 10, which will be, I think, $2 million through ARP. Yeah. And the only reason why I'm saying that, because we, we really are, I'm saying, abiding when it comes to Parks and Rec. And I don't want to have to ask for it through a budget requirement, but if we could use American Rescue Plan dollars.
Well, what we will do is take a look and see if there's a way to work something. I don't know at this moment, but I will have staff take a look.
Okay. Thank you.
And also check which ones may be able to be done with the SPOLOST money because some of those will maybe rehab by that. And then out of what's left, there may be a way to lower that amount.
Yeah. And, and I'm not sure if the 10, were any of those 10 in the SPOLOST?
I apologize, I don't.
You don't know?
I don't recall.
We'll, we'll take a look at all playgrounds and our funding, various funding sources and see if we can come up with something.
Yeah. I just hate that, you know, we're just letting it go. And I'm happy that these three have a funding source now, but I think we need to look at some funding for the other 10.
Yeah, we'll take a look.
Somebody just mentioned, talking about the playgrounds, the one over at the Splash Pad. They said it's already got some, some challenges over there.
Well, and, and of course, that's a, that was privately funded 100% over at the Splash Pad and the playground.
Right.
Were 100% private dollars.
I guess I'm just, what happens when it goes?
Oh, it ages, yeah.
Yeah. What happens when it goes bad? Do we do it or we go back?
That's a good question. Good question. So Mayor, if there are no other questions, we're going to move to pickleball, which we've had some conversation about today.
Counselor Tucker?
And that's going to be Holly as well.
So I wanted to come and give everyone a quick update of where we are as a department and as a city on locations that people can currently go and play pickleball here in the city of Columbus. So currently, we have two courts at 29th Street, two courts at Carver Park. On Mondays and Thursdays and Saturday mornings during these times, we are allowing eight to 10 courts at Cooper Creek to be transitioned into pickleball courts. And then at Comer, we have two courts. Franchester Recreation, we have two courts. At Northside, we have two courts. Two courts at Pop Austin for therapeutic recreation play. And at Salmon Road, we have two courts. We're transitioning to pickleball. And at Shirley Winston, we have two courts. So that gives us a total of 26 courts anytime during the week that's being used for pickleball. I know that our local pickleball association is aware of these courts because on a daily basis, if you go out to their Facebook page, they are listing them for us and we're greatly appreciative of that because they do reference the locations and the times of where people can play. So that's fabulous. We see a huge usage, not at all of them, but at many of our facilities, people are playing and they are using them. And to be quite honest, they love it because it's indoors. I know there's a big push, obviously, for outdoors, but there is a huge push as well for some of our elderly individuals, especially during this time of the year when it's 90 degrees and humidity is equally 90. So they do enjoy playing indoors. But we do have the 26 courts that people are currently playing in. Moving forward, where we're headed, we currently have, and I apologize that 200,000 is incorrect, it should say 150,000, but we do have 150,000 private donation that will be put towards our pickleball courts at Cooper Creek. We have another 1.5 million that was discussed this morning that will be allocated as part of our SPOLOST. It was budgeted for the fiscal year '24. And with that, we're looking at putting at least 12 courts. And I've also listed our notice of election and how it is specified that it will go for Cooper Creek. Additionally, moving forward, we also, as was discussed this morning, we have a meeting this Thursday with the pickleball group to see how we can continue to move forward with them as well, to build more dedicated courts outdoors for pickleball. But right now, we do have 26 courts that the community can use across the city. And if you saw the different locations, you recognize that that is across the entire city. We believe in being very comprehensive when we offer anything regardless of what activity it is. And so we have tried our best to put it all the way across the city from one district to the other, from one end of Columbus to the other. And with that, that's the end of my presentation.
Is private donation 900, 90,000 or 200,000?
It's 150,000.
Okay. Because it said 200 up there.
Well, she noted that it was 150, not 200.
I was reading ahead, I shouldn't have been paying attention.
Yeah, typing error.
Counselor Kogel?
The, I know we had talked about Comer Recreation when we were on the bus tour. Is the, is, when you say no program at this time, does that just mean that we haven't found the, like, to open up the recreation center yet?
Yes, ma'am. We're going to be looking at making some changes perhaps in the coming year, getting with the city manager and his office to see how we can best do that. And then that would allow that to possibly come online. It's ready. The courts are already put in so that they can be played.
Okay.
We were trying to be very comprehensive. Annually, we resurface all of our facilities and their courts and that's the opportunity for us to make those type changes. And so when they were here mid to late April, we went ahead and made that happen, just trying to forecast and be ready for the future.
Yeah. I thought we were resurfacing it. All right, thank you.
Mayor Procham?
Yes, regarding the courts, the transition on those badminton courts to pickleball, do you know, have a date on when that'll be completed?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a date on when that'll be completed?
No, they're already playing on them. And actually, that's one of our locations that has a large population that's already using them. We will not take away from the badminton courts because we have a private group, not, I shouldn't say private group, a group of citizens locally that love to play badminton. They've been playing for more than 10 years. They asked to play there at Salmon Road, so we certainly want to, do not want to discourage that. And we'll keep those athletes and individuals as well. But we also recognize that we have a lot of pickleball users as well. But for right now, we're just basically doing the best we could with the courts that we have. But we're looking at how we can outline that differently and add those to it so they're not having to play on the, on the badminton lines, although from what I understand, from the users, they don't mind. They greatly appreciate the opportunity to play in the air conditioning.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Davis?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I, I think it's great that, you know, I'm hearing good things about the momentum catching fire and moving. And certainly what you presented here is helping to, to get people familiar with it and get into play and understand it and learn it and then continuing to progress. So I think that's all good. And, and, Ms. City Manager, I actually, I'm going to do my best to be at that meeting, but I think it's going to be productive. I think we can work a lot of these things out and move forward and get a vision moving forward. Because we got to, like I said, we got to get ahead of this thing and it keeps morphing. You know, the thing, it keeps, it's a moving target, but we're going to get there and we're going to be better than anybody else, I can tell you that. People are going to talk about Columbus. You know, what Columbus has, because I told you, nobody has the ability in the southeast to offer an urban environment pickleball complex. They don't. There's none. Check them all out. So we are ahead of game if we do it right, but I, I think that conversation you're talking about and sitting down is going to be a good one. And maybe we can get a lot of things out on the table and try to, you know, figure this thing out and solidify it. But I'm just glad it's in our community and, and, because it's, it's amazing, you know, the contagiousness of it, especially from the kids all the way up and then across the nation. And, and no telling what, as soon as that stuff hits national TV on a regular basis, I mean, people are going to get excited about it even more so. So thank you and I'll see you at that meeting.
Sure.
I think that's it.
And so Mayor, the final update is on City Hall. And as I said, we'll come back to you each week, each meeting with an update because this is fluid and, and departments are going to be moving, you know, different dates during the course of this month and next month. And we just want to keep it before you and before the public. So we'll be coming back with updates on each agenda.
I thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Just a brief update on City Hall, was here a couple of weeks ago, plan on being here next Tuesday as well, providing you an update on, on the progress and moving schedule for City Hall. So Phase One timeline, we did obtain our certificate of occupancy last Friday, so that means we've completed all the building inspections, made the building department happy, made the fire marshal happy. So the building is back and ready for occupancy. So right now, you know, the contractor's doing some of the final cleaning, moving some furniture around, doing some of the punch list activities, making sure all the paint looks good and all, all those types of activities. So moving activities are tentatively scheduled to begin next week, the week of June 19th. Of course, the 19th is a holiday, so they wouldn't start until the 20th. And all departments would be relocated by the end of July. So we do plan on starting with more internal departments, those departments that don't really interact with the public, such as the IT department, kind of use them as our guinea pig to get them over there, let them test everything out before the public really starts visiting the facility. So these are all the departments in the Phase One move with their current location as well as where they are relocating to, as well as the month that we're currently targeting for. So you see about half of them, we plan on getting done by the end of June and then the other half or so will be into the first part of July. And Counselor Tucker had asked last meeting for some layouts of the facility and we do, I can provide these to you in a larger PDF format, so they're easy to read, it's hard to fit everything up on the slide. But just by way of orientation, north is to the right of the screen, so 12th Street would be on the right-hand side of your screen, First Avenue would be on the bottom and the top would be Broadway. The red dots are the public entrances. I know there was some conversation earlier about the information desk and concierge.
And let me just interrupt to say, the only dot, as you can see, that you, the reception is, would be, I don't know if you can circle it, or the concierge, that square. And so the only entrance that that person will not be able to see someone enter the building is that red dot to the north of the screen. Otherwise, they can see people as they enter the door.
Is that going through the?
Where is it?
Yes, that, yes, that goes through the courtyard.
Yeah. So we don't want to close the courtyard because they can't see them, but that's the only area that information, concierge person and the deputy sheriff can't see you when you walk through the door.
Maybe mirrors should be.
Mirrors would be, yeah.
And there, I said, there will be signage in all of the entrances, certainly in the elevator lobbies, you know, showing which department's on which floor, you know, which way you need to turn to go when you get to the floor, all of that type of information will be in signage. And coming off of Broadway, that little short hallway before you get to the, the main hallway is, there's really nowhere to go. It's just an entrance hallway, so you can't, there's really no door for you to go into and hide.
So, so that northern, north one, so once they come through that door, as soon as they hit that hallway, then they will see them. You know, so they, there's not far they can go from that. What, they enter the door and then they enter that hallway where they can be seen. I guess is the point I'm making.
So real briefly, I'll just kind of run through the, the colors. So on the first floor, I go at the top of the screen, the brownish color is the Human Resources, so they're right there off of Broadway. The top left corner, the light teal color, is the City's Health and Wellness Center. So that facility will be relocating from its current leased space. 10th Avenue will be relocating to this property. It's, it's a couple of months behind just due to the existing lease, but it will eventually be relocated here in the bottom left corner.
So, so, so Counselor Davis will eliminate the lease, the rent that we're paying for the Health and Wellness Center as they, yeah.
The darker teal color in the bottom left is the UGA Cooperative Extension. They will be moving over from the Annex. And kind of the beigeish color bottom right is the Finance Department, the, the part of the Finance Department on the fifth floor of the Government Center. Those are all their offices. And then right across the hallway from them is the 301 Citizen Service Center. We'll be relocating to that portion. You see the big gray blocks, that's Phase Two. So again, Sinovus will keep operating in that facility until August 1st of 2024. On the second floor, again, the brown area is the second floor of the HR building. That's where they have a lot of their training rooms and everything will be on the second floor of that building. The purple, bluish-purple area is the Parks and Recreation Administration Office. The lighter brown color is the job training and green is IT. So those are all on the, the second floor of the facility. And then the third floor, again, in Phase One, so these are all temporary relocations, so all of these departments will be relocated, or will be located on the third floor during Phase One and then in 2025 will relocate to Phase Two. So these are all temporary homes for these department, but in the orange color, you have the City Attorney's Office, which eventually will be the Engineering Department. So they will have that whole space. The blue color will be the Mayor's Office for the next year and a half. Then after that, it'll become Inspections and Codes. The green will be the City Manager's Office for a year and a half and then will become Planning. And the pink will be the Clerk of Council's Office and then will become Community Reinvestment. And so I did want to include the Phase Two timeline. Again, Sinovus will vacate the Executive Building at the end of next July. And then we have some renovations to do to that facility. And then all these relocations will happen in 2025. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Tucker?
Yes, thank you for providing that information. In reference to Phase One. In reference to Phase One, the sixth floor, did you have the floor plan for that? Because I didn't, the, I didn't see the sixth floor.
So, you mean the current occupants of the sixth floor? So there you go, and this is their space temporarily.
This is it right here?
Correct.
Okay, and then, in Phase Two, I'm looking at, so Phase Two, the Clerk of Council will go to the second floor?
Correct, they go to the second floor of the Executive Building.
Okay, did you have within this plan council offices and for the, the second floor? Just asking, like a space for councilors?
You mean, in the temporary?
On the, no, Phase, is this Phase Two temporary or Phase Two permanent?
Phase Two will be permanently, and there is not room for offices for all the councilors in that facility.
Now, they, they are going to be in this building when all the va- people vacate.
So one of the questions that was, well, one of the things that's concerning to me is the Clerk of Council is an extension of us, so if we're here and they're there, if we need any type of assistance, we got to ask them to come to us instead of us being in the building, and we have all this space. Just asking.
Yeah, I mean, that would be the case, and of course, I don't know what is going to be done, how it's going to be done in this building for council members, and I'm sure there will be an opportunity for space for them with count, with Clerk of Council, and like now, that, I guess Clerk of Council, I don't know how you do it now, but you would have some space here, and there would be space for, I guess, a conference room, or if they had whatever kind of meeting they're going to have. I, I don't know how, I haven't been seeing it, but I don't know.
Is there, is there a, a conference room at the clerks, that serves the clerk's office in, after Phase Two?
Yes, yes, so there is a dedicated conference room, and there's also, on the floor in Phase Two, there's a, there's a building-wide shared conference room on the same floor as the clerk's office, so there's really two conference rooms directly adjacent, or one's internal to their department, one's adjacent to it, that could be used, you know, for councilors to have, have meetings at the City Hall.
And so this will be Phase Two, that will be in the Sanovis building where our permanent space would be?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and that was the thing, my, my concern is just trying to make sure that we're not forcing, if you're going to put council here, you're forcing us to have the Clerk of Council, if we need their support, to come over to this facility instead of being amongst everybody else, and say we need, you know, finance or whoever, everybody is over in the new government, in the new City Hall, I don't understand why the council couldn't be over there. I mean, even if it's just one office along with the, the Clerk of Council's full up on you, so I, I just. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's fine, but you're putting them.
And I'm hopeful with technology, because, I mean, even today, post-pandemic, you know, my meetings are still via Teams, you know, all of my department head meetings, you know, and I, I mean, I don't know.
So, I'm gonna say that, so, I can't think of her, her name, and she's with this Miss Georgia Pageant, and I, I get this often, people call and they, can we meet at your office? I don't have an office, you know, like, you want to go to Glenn's office? Go to Glenn's office at Starbucks, but somebody, somebody called me last week wanting to meet at my office, and I'm, you know, I'm telling her to come up here to the, you know, prior to the council meeting, and we can meet somewhere, you know, up here, but, I mean, we don't have a, a dedicated location where we don't, we don't have.
You're going to get that.
Yeah.
And this, you're going to get that.
And, and you can use, I guess, the conference room and, and at the Phase Two thing, in the clerk's conference.
Well, and if you're here, you, you could use, I'm sure, I don't know where they're going to be, right, because I haven't been involved in that, but there'll be somewhere in this building, they'll have a conference room, they'll have access to the conference room behind this chamber or the council chambers, so it'll all be here together.
I think the, the intent right now is what will be the former Parks and Recreation space here could be utilized as the council's space, which is right across the hall from the community room and things like that, you know, could be utilized for that, for council office purposes.
So.
Okay. Game round.
So any other questions, Mayor?
No, sir, none, no. Okay, wait a minute.
I don't have any questions regarding this, but I do have.
Okay, I think we're through with this topic.
Okay.
But Counselor Tucker, Counselor Tucker has a question on another issue.
Sure.
So myself and Counselor Barnes were contacted about a few veterans. One is an employee at Access to Independence, military ve- veteran, I think he is paraplegic. He, I think relocated to Brookstone, if I'm correct, and we, I had got some information from Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin regarding the fixed routes and the dollar ride and how that works. And then I went to the veteran meeting that we have every second Tuesday, and one of the veterans who is legally blind, I think, Mr. McNeil, ju- yeah, and he had mentioned, I think it's called Demand Responsive Service.
Yeah.
So, when I started research, because he talked in detail for a long time, in reference to what other cities are doing, and I told him I would bring it up to council, so what I did want to say is that according to the Federal Transit Administration, it was noted that the community may offer other kinds of transportation services, it says, or in addition to or instead of the fixed route, to have ADA paratransit services. So, my question is, is it a way for us to, I guess, look into possibly using the instead of requirement, meaning instead of using the fixed route when we're talking about demand responsive services? Can we extend and do something, I think, Council, I'm still calling him Councilor House, but he was involved in the conversation as well, I think he mentioned something about, you had made a comment about a, like a Uber?
It's an on-demand microtransit system that we're going to be piloting, and City Manager can give you more information, but basically what it'll do is it'll work like an app, you can schedule an appointment, it won't have any boundaries, we can run that anywhere throughout the county, because Mr. McNeil, I've spoken with him a number of times, and, and there are other issues, I know there's a woman with a son who's got autism and he's comfortable going to work, but she has to take him to a location and drop him, and that heightens his anxiety, makes him less productive at work. So the City Manager's working on trying to get some of these microtransit systems, they work by appointment, but you can schedule your trip, and it keeps you from having to go down and make a trend, a transfer at the transfer station, and then get another bus to try to get somewhere else. And if that takes off, there are some cities, Gainesville, who have done away with their transit system, and they just use these on-demand type services.
It's actually several cities, and once I, once I started reading.
We've been working on that for a couple of months, so.
Okay.
Getting closer, I hope, to being able to purchase the vehicles and start testing some.
So we just working on the plan and trying to get the vehicles?
You know, they, they are working on it, and those vehicles won't require CDL, for example, I mean, it's kind of like the, the golf cart system, you know, it's supply, demand, and they're, they're working through a process, but, and, and this will be more like in one of the.
Like Uber?
I, I didn't want to call the name, but.
I know you did, but hey.
Uh, yeah, so, but yeah, we're working on, I guess you could tell by my pause, I was trying to find a different word, but.
Demand, demand responsive.
Yeah, so, but we're working on those things, and, and then, you know, with him, and, and I, I need to check with Metro, but, you know, because they're operating on federal government, Federal Transit Administration policy that says wherever you provide fixed route, your demand response can go beyond that for three and a quarter miles, three-fourths of a mile, but those are the boundaries that they use, and I don't know if it says that you cannot exceed the three-fourths of a mile beyond your fixed route, or if that's the, the maximum that they require the federal government. And of course, you perhaps could go beyond, but of course, that's a.
It's a huge dollar.
That's right.
Because if you move, you can't move, like, if you've got one housing area, you want to move it beyond that. You can't do that without moving all of the other routes, the same distance from the fixed route, and then it becomes just an incredibly expensive deal. So this, this, I think, will, will work, but we, we won't pilot it, and we're, we're having delivery issues on getting the vehicles, so.
Right.
So the vi- the vehicles will be, like, ha, um.
They'll be smaller.
Like a van.
Van, for example, is what I anticipate.
It will have.
A lift, oh, yeah.
A lift on.
Yeah, you will have, even if it's a seven-passing van, it will have the flip out that you roll on and, you know.
Okay, and that, that was one of the, you know, concerns and questions, but I'm happy that we are working on it, and that way I can give those individuals, you know, a response, and hopefully we can bring it back before council in the presentation.
Yeah.
So those veterans and disabled individuals will be able to.
Yeah, we got a lot of good stuff in the works if, you know, if we, the supply and demand issues, we can get past them. Mayor, that concludes my agenda.
Okay, thank you.
And, and Mayor, you may note, I would just say to council, I've asked staff to, when you do the referrals, I've asked them to, and you'll see this as part of your council packet in the future, they've listed by number all of the referrals, for example, from the May 30th, and it tells you who's, this is assigned to, and, and the response that's final, or they're working on it, and we'll provide future updates. So it, it will be the way we will respond back to you with your referrals that we get from you.
Good, thank you.
I don't have it today, but I can, I can get back with you on the, the timeline that they're working with, it keeps moving, like with the golf cart thing, it keeps.
The funding's in place because of some of the grants and some of the funding that.
And T-Spot's funded and so forth, yeah.
We're ready to go as soon as we get the vehicles. And Clerk?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and councilors. For the Clerk's agenda, have two items of information. The first is a Certificate of Need application that was submitted by Ultra Care of Georgia Inc. to expand its existing home health agency. Item two is a Certificate of Need application as well. This one was submitted by Azon's Home Care LTD, they're proposing to establish a new home health agency. Item three is a resolution to counsel the July 4th, August 1st, and September 5th proclamation sessions.
And a second to cancel the proclamation sessions, all in favor, say aye? Anyone opposed? All right.
Item four is a resolution to excuse Counselor Garrett from today's meeting.
Motion second to excuse Counselor Garrett, all in favor, say aye? Anyone opposed?
Item five, this is a resolution approving an honorary street designation application.
Motion second to approve item five, we'll have, if you would, go through that, but all in favor, say aye? Any opposed?
This application was submitted by Pastor L. Darnell Skinner Jr. He's with the Bread of Life Christian Center, he's requesting signage to be placed at the intersecting streets at each end of the one-block area of Manchester Expressway and 46th Street in honor of Bishop L. D. Skinner Sr.
Okay.
Item number six is a resolution approving an honorary designation application. This one was submitted by Deputy Director Becky Summerlin. This is from the Department of Parks and Recreation to rename the Cooper Creek Tennis Center Clubhouse in honor of Mr. Rick Gordon.
Very good deal, all in, all in favor, there's a motion second, all in favor on item six, say aye? Anybody opposed? Okay, that's approved.
Item seven is an email correspondence from Ms. Emma Kimbrel. She's with Community Reinvestment, requesting that the seat of Ms. Cendrika Lakes be declared vacant due to a lack of attendance.
There's a motion and second to declare Ms. Lakes' seat vacant, all in favor, signify by saying aye? Anyone opposed? That's approved.
Item eight is a letter of resignation from Ms. Jennifer Upshaw, she's resigning from her seat on the Public Safety Advisory Commission.
All right, is, is her second? Motion to receive the resignation from Ms. Upshaw and a second, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed?
Item number nine, minutes of various boards to be received.
Motion to receive the minutes, is her second? All right, there is a second, all in favor, say aye? Anybody opposed? They're received.
Next, we have board appointments, we have the Mayor's appointments first, the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board of Commissioners, Michelle Spivey, Pay Sim Halter, and Dan Gilbert are all interested in serving another term, and Mr. Mayor is renominating all three, they may be confirmed.
All right, motion second to confirm, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed?
For the Retirees Health Benefits Committee, Mayor Henderson is nominating Kristi Johnson for the seat of Perry Johnson.
Motion second to approve Ms. Johnson, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed?
Next, we have council appointments that are ready for confirmation, the Columbus Aquatics Commission, Mr. Christopher Kennedy was nominated to serve another term of office.
Motion and second to confirm Mr. Kennedy, all, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed?
Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, Mr. Eddie Florence was nominated to serve another term, he may be confirmed.
Motion second to confirm Mr. Florence, all in favor, say aye? Anyone opposed?
And next, we have the Retirees Health Benefits Committee.
All right, there's a motion and second to approve Ms. McEnany on the Retirees Health Benefits Committee, all in favor, say aye? Any, any opposed?
Next, we have council district seat appointments, any nominations may be confirmed for this meeting, the Public Safety Advisory Commission, the seat of Pamela Williams, this is the District Two representative, and we also have a vacant seat in, for the Council District Six representative. Next, we have council appointments, any nominations will be listed for the next meeting. For the Board of Family and Children's Services, Council Barnes is nominating Dr. Chandler Paget for the pediatric healthcare provider seat, and we will bring this back for confirmation at the next meeting. For the Board of Water Commissioners, the seat of Rebecca Rumer, Counselor Thomas is nominating Jennifer Upshaw to succeed Ms. Rebecca Rumer, and we will bring this back for confirmation at the next meeting. Did just want to mention, these appointments are made in the month of July for terms beginning in January, however, Ms. Rumer has indicated that she would like to relinquish her seat as soon as an appointment has been made, and so I would just request that she be allowed to, or the new appointee, be allowed to fill the remaining term of Ms. Rumer till the end of the year, December 31st, and also go ahead and start a new term in January. And so we, we will have that, we'll prepare that for the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, the Building Authority of Columbus have two seats open for nominations, the seat of Lee Lacar and Vincent Allen, Counselor Begley is nominating Tyler Martin-Dill to succeed Mr. Vincent Allen, and we will bring this back for confirmation at the next meeting. For the Columbus Aquatics Commission, have. For the Columbus Aquatics Commission have one seat open for nominations, the seat of Bruce Samuels. For the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, we have, Councilor Begley is nominating Ms. Doris Bishop to succeed Mr. Matt Horn as a District 15 representative. Keep Columbus Beautiful Director is recommending David Hauser to fill the unexpired term of Doug McLeod, Jr., Kimberly Wright to succeed William Bande, and Pamela Green Thomas to fill the unexpired term of Alyssa Williams, if a member of council wanted to place those names in nomination. Mayor Pro Tim Allen has placed all of those names in nomination. For the Medical Center Hospital Authority, the seat of Rodney Mahone. He was not seeking reappointment. This term expired December 31st, 2022. And the members of council submit three nominees for each of the board term expirations or vacancies. And Councilor Thomas is nominating Woodruff W. MacWilliams III, Murray Solomon, and Tracy Sayers for the seat of Rodney Mahone, if the council would make a motion to send those, forward those to the medical center.
All right, there's a motion to forward them to the medical centers, their second? All right, there is a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? They'll be forwarded.
Next, we have the Planning Advisory Commission. We have the seat of Sheila Brown. She's no longer a resident of Muskogee County. Mayor Pro Tim Allen is nominating Mr. Rick Stallins. And if there are no other nominations, we will bring this back for confirmation at the next meeting. For the Region Six Regional Advisory Council for Department of Behavior, Health, and Development of Disabilities, the seat of Cynthia Smith is open for nominations. She is not eligible to serve another term.
We're nominating Ms. Janet Buss, Dr. Janet Buss.
Thank you, Council Barnes. We'll bring this back for confirmation at the next meeting. Next, we have the Retirees Health Benefits Committee. We have the seat of Mike Massey. He is not seeking reappointment. It is open for nominations. We did receive from the HR Director, a nominee of John D. Hawke, if a member of council wanted to place his name in nomination. Thank you, Council Thomas has placed his name in nomination, and we will bring this back for confirmation at the next meeting. And next, I have some upcoming board appointments. We have the Planning Advisory Commission, and this is council's appointment. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Council Kogle.
Before we break for, I think we're going into the second session, right? The party never ends. I just, and I just wanted to kind of speak on a lot of council's behalf of that we're struggling a little bit with, and I brought this up before, but offline, but now online, with receiving the agenda on the Friday in preparation for a Tuesday meeting, especially when the Tuesday meetings fall on a holiday weekend, where we don't have, where we don't have the opportunity to even have one business day. And we are receiving one business day to talk to department heads, to have communication with our constituents, as well as have communication amongst councilors. And so I believe, Clifton, if you correct me if I'm wrong, I'd like to make a verbal resolution on the statement of policy on when we receive the agenda. And I'd like that to be six days, six business days prior to the council meeting. So that would be like the Monday prior to, like a Monday would be like a week and one day prior to the council meeting. And if we can do that effective July 1st, which would mean that we would receive the agenda on July 3rd, even though that might be a holiday. So we might have to flex a little bit on that, for, excuse me, for the council meeting that is on July 11th. We just don't have the communication. And I know it's going to be a little bit of a painful process for the first couple, the couple council meetings, but I do think that this is going to make us, one, much more efficient. And, I mean, you just want to know that it's like 2:15, and we've been here since 9:00, and we've had a lot of conversation amongst ourselves because we have just gotten the information on Friday afternoon, and we just haven't had the chance to talk amongst ourselves or hear our constituents. And, and that way, we can talk, we can talk to all of the directors as needed. It just gives us a little bit more time. I do realize that change is a little bit difficult sometimes, but I do think at this point of where we are with the city, that the only way that we're going to really move forward is if we make a little bit of a change. So I'd like to make that motion on having all the materials provided six business days ahead of the council meeting.
There's a motion second. I know Mayor Pro Tim wants to speak to the motion. And what I, what I would just throw out there as an alternative, because I agree with you, I don't, whatever council wants to do is fine. But that far in advance, things that come up afterwards wouldn't make the agenda if the agenda's published on Monday. So, and council has been very clear, they don't want to see things added after the agenda is published. And that could make a three-week lag for a lot of the items. What I would offer up, or I don't even know if we can do it, but maybe put up through Munich Code or somehow, start posting things as they come in. So if we start building it on that Monday, but then still deliver it on like Thursday or Friday.
But we're not, but we're not building it on, on the Monday.
That's a suggestion, too.
But I've asked like several times of, can we, like, can we have the agenda on Monday? And I ask clerk of council of what the update is on the Monday, and there's nothing in Munich Code. I just think if we don't have set rules and guidelines, we're not going to achieve what we want to achieve. And it's just going to, it's just going to flex, and it's going to, you know, it's, and I realize that you think it's going to be delayed three weeks, but if we plan ahead and we're proactive instead of being reactive over the course of time, over the course of one or two months, we're actually going to be ahead rather than ending up delaying. If, if we sit here and we, and we have the conversation and we delay, we then delay two weeks. And so we don't get, we don't get that conversation, and we still don't get our answers to our questions, we delay another week, so.
And again, I wasn't trying to delay the whole thing. I was just saying, as it comes ready, start posting it. And that way, you've got some of the stuff that y'all are already working on. And if anything does pop up on a Wednesday, midweek, and you could still deal with it. I don't know. Mayor Pro Tim?
Well, the timeline concerns me. I would agree with maybe a Thursday, possibly Wednesday, but I think going Monday is too far. And I would, I would offer a suggestion that we may, maybe let's try this, doing a Wednesday, Thursday-type timeline for those weeks that fall before a holiday, and just kind of see how it works before we jump all the way back out. I mean, there are only a few holidays that fall on Monday where you have an inconvenience there. But I would think there would be a situation where you, I mean, I've been on council long enough where we've had Development Authority come in. They've got an urgent need, they've got a, you know, a fish on the line, they need to land, and they need a decision from us, some kind of a commitment from us. And if you don't, if you have a, an inflexible agenda, it's going to cause a problem. You're going to have to wait, and then three weeks, and then you, then I'm sure.
I mean, I think we can, I think we can start with Wednesday. I mean, I would be willing to start with Wednesday, but not, but if it's, if it's Thursday, then, and it's a holiday weekend, which we get one holiday weekend pretty much every month, you know, then we're looking at just having Friday as, as a chance. And, you know, and especially if it's a holiday weekend on a Friday, people are taking off, or people just take off Fridays because that's the world that we live in. So, I mean, I can live with Wednesday so that we can at least have Wednesday, Thursday, Friday to, to at least talk amongst ourselves with our constituents. And, and if that's not enough time, or we practice with that for a little while, that we back that up to Monday. We can ease our.
One more point is that the staff, I think the clerk provides us with a, the City Manager's Office provides us with a list of the holidays during the year, so they, we know what dates the office will be closed and that kind of thing. So they could also identify which dates the holidays fall on, and which Mondays are affected with that. And they could go ahead and, and plan out that on that week, we would, we would provide things on Wednesday or Thursday.
But one to two days is just not, is not enough time to, to hear from our constituents, for our constituents to even look at the agenda and go, oh, my goodness, you know, short-term rentals is up. And if you look at the, like, if you look at our track record this, this year, I mean, we have short-term rentals that is, you know, kind of, I don't know, I don't want to say blew up in our face, but caused, you know, caused a lot of confusion. And we had parking, you know, the parking resolution that we had last time that was added last minute. So, like, we just, we don't, we don't have enough time to, to, to talk. So, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to make the amendment to that motion of a Wednesday, and.
Let's, let's try Thursday, and then if it doesn't work, we can move. Let's just try.
Thursday afternoon is no different than having, Thursday, COB on Thursday is no different than having on Friday. There's, there's, there's no difference. And people take Fridays off.
Well, then you're going, so you're going to close the business on Wednesday?
Yeah, so we have Thursday, Friday, and Monday.
Okay.
To start. That's a good compromise. It's half of six.
All right, Mr. City Manager, did you have something?
And we'll do whatever you decide, obviously, but I was going to say, as you pointed out, Mayor, you know, and you, Mayor Pro Tim, but, and so what we'll do, and like, what you had on the agenda today, you wouldn't have had it today, you'll have it at the next meeting. So basically, what?
Well, I mean, you can, you can start, I mean, you don't have to, I'm not saying, and I wouldn't expect that your office would just cease, cease business. Like, we're going to have to, we as a city are going to have to flex and, and pivot a little bit and get what we need to get on the agenda. It's just not, because we're taking away three days of preparation time, doesn't mean that we don't do three days of work. I mean, when you go on vacation, you don't, you prepare for three days of vacation. You don't say, well, I'll just do it when I get back.
No, no, my, my team work after hours and weekends.
Right.
So, you know, you never stop.
I mean, for the first couple, the first couple of weeks, it's going to take a little bit of, of time to change, but.
I guess my point is, things that you received on Friday, I mean, they worked all week to package that and get it ready for you Friday. So my thing, if you wanted on Monday, what you receive on this Friday, you would have received this, on Monday, for the next meeting. I'm just saying, it's going to delay. We're not going to be, it's going to, we're going to work it. I just want you to know, we're going to be providing, the things that we would have provided to you a week ago will be provided to you a week beyond that.
I have full confidence that if there's something that needs to get done, you're going to get it on the agenda.
Oh, yeah, we are going to get it on the agenda, not the week that you would have gotten it, it's going to be the following week. It's just that we will be slower in pace in moving things. And I'm fine with that, because they're going to work eight, 10 hours a day, and they're going to work after hours, and they're going to work weekends.
I think that you're going to be able to put priorities where priorities need to be. And I think, and I have full confidence in you and your staff that you're going to be able to flex and pivot and make sure what we need to see is going to be seen.
That you have that confidence, but I'm just telling you.
I have full confidence.
I'm assuring you, it's going to work just like I described it to you, because they will not be able to, they would not have been able to get you the things that are on the agenda today by last Monday. They would not have been able to do it.
Not, not right away, but you will be able to do it in the future.
You'll get there, it will just be, we'll be moving at a slower pace. That's all, that's fine. I just wanted you to know.
Councilor Thomas.
Mr. City Manager, I beg to differ. I think that your leadership and your staff, once you get into a pattern of making this agenda available to us earlier, you will be able to do that. I also would suggest to you, Mayor Pro Tim said, you know, the Building Authority may come, well, to, for your office to communicate now with those entities that regularly come to us, the, you know, the United Way, whatever it is, and say, we've changed our schedule. This is our schedule. In order for you to get on the calendar, you have to have your information in our office by such and such a date. And if we, if we have some of these that are urgent, that are not on the agenda, let's see if the city attorney can't figure out some way that we can deal with that kind of stuff and, and get it earlier. Mr. City, Mr. Mayor, there are eight Monday holidays this fiscal year. I know that because I think it's going to screw up the garbage collection whenever we move to the new garbage collection schedule. And those eight Mondays, most of them are the second Monday of the month. And we, you know, we don't have the, we can't get to the staff to, if we have questions. So I, too, have full faith and confidence that the City Manager's Office will be able to handle this, and that you will do whatever is needed to be done, so that there will not be any, there may be some, some late additions, but 99% of what's on the agenda for this week could have been given to us last Wednesday.
Well, Mr. Mayor.
And so I do think that you, you can, you can do it, you can handle it.
Mr. Mayor, I do appreciate the confidence around this table. And we are going to work within the rules that you provide to us.
You always have worked within the rules, Mr. City Manager, and I appreciate that.
Mr. City Attorney.
Yeah, just one final caveat. I think you just said it, and as long as we're all on the same page, the public will not get the posted agenda until Friday, as has always occurred, because we don't want news media and others sometimes to have confidential topics or semi-confidential. But other than that, it's a verbal request, and you can adopt it. And there, there are going to be things that happen.
So let me understand, so you don't want us to post it when we give it to the council?
Not publicly, no. Internally, if there's a way to do that, fine, but.
I don't understand why not.
Well, because it's not going to be finalized until Friday, sometimes.
No, 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 it'll be finalized Wednesday.
Yeah, because we can't change it once we give it to the council. I mean, it's set.
Well, you know, we're going to have times where the General Assembly calls us, whoever it is, Richard Smith, we get something on, we're going to have to do it. So there's, there are going to be some exceptions. You just need to know that going in. If you, if you're going to post it publicly, you're going to start getting open record requests, calls from the media on Wednesday, and you might not want that. I'm just telling you to think about it. I would wait until Friday.
Well, if we, if we release it to the council, it's a public document.
If the council has it, no, it's not a public document. It's still a staff document. You don't have to make it public.
If it's final.
Can we just say, let him work it out?
I'm okay with that. That's, that's the only reason I was suggesting, kind of post it, is you get it ready. And that way, if you had something a little bit later in the week, you could still get it on in time. If it was an emergency, not because he didn't move the mountain again, but because just sometimes things drop in your lap. Not often, but they drop in our lap, and we're trying to get it to y'all. Because like, that, that, parking is a great example. That was a last-minute deal because of a request from a security meeting. And, you know, that's where that got kind of.
So, let me understand, so right now, you're saying Wednesday, you want it by Wednesday?
Wednesday at 5:00, I think is what they said.
To the council members? And, and you want it starting July when? What? What?
July 1st? Well, I mean, it, well, now that we're, I guess it would be July 5th would be.
So we meet on July, on, on June 27th, which is a Tuesday.
There's a grace period in it. So effective July, for, for us, so start delivering it July 5th, which is, right?
But after, I mean.
So for the rest of June, on Friday, the way you normally do it, but July gives you a little bit of time to prepare, to let departments know when dates need to be, to be.
The process.
Right.
July 11th is the first.
Yeah, so July 11th is our first meeting in July, so it would be July 5th was when we would receive the agenda, COB. Does that make sense?
The process will start at July 5th.
I just said July 1st because it was an easy number to remember. So really, we would be accepting, or we would be seeing our agenda on July, COB, Wednesday, July 5th for the 11th city council meeting at 9:00 a.m., and then we would post it. At least then we can have the conversations between councilors and on, on Thursday, and then it can be public facing on the Friday.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Right.
And make that really consummative.
All right, so there's a motion, there's an, there's an amended motion to, to have the council packet available, close the business Wednesday.
Internally for the council.
Internal for the council, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. And was there, there was a second, I heard, Charmaine, did you say that? So we do have a motion second for the oral resolution. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, if nobody has anything else, we do have a request for a very short executive session to discuss.
We have a state acquisition and disposal.
All right, there's a motion second. All in favor say aye. Who did make second? I think Counsel Tucker. There was a harmony over there. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? We're in executive session.
Okay.
All right, we have been in executive session, discussed disposition of property. No votes were taken.
Do we adjourn?
Motion second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourned. Thank you.